Okay, call to order. We have a quorum. May we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Stix?
Here.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Here.
Councilmember Blatts?
Here.
Councilmember Francina?
Here.
Councilmember Haney?
Here. Okay. All right. Thank you, Gail. Ryan, would you please leave it, lead us in the pledge?
All right.
Thank you.
Everybody, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ryan. To the agenda?
Move to approve.
Again.
Okay, can we have a roll call for that? Gail?
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney? Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
And Councilmember Haney, I can't hear you for some reason.
He's muted.
Oh, okay. Okay, because I know he's there. That's good.
There we go.
Like everyone else in Ohio, their internet is going up and down, in and out, all over.
Fun times.
All right. Thank you very much, Gail. All right. May we move, please, to the consent calendar? Motion to?
Ms. Stix?
Yes.
I would like to pull item G to suggest adding one sentence.
Okay.
And, and Mayor, I think I would like to pull item H.
Okay. And H. Gail, is there any public comment on G?
No public comments at all on the consent calendar.
Okay. Okay, great. Any? So then can we approve the rest?
You move approval of items 1, A, B, C, D, E, and F of the consent calendar?
Second it.
Okay, great, thank you. Gail? Rate a vote on that one.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Gail. Okay. So we have item G? That was pulled?
Mayor, I would like to suggest adding one sentence to the economic development section on attachment A, page four of six. We have four items that the city supports. And I would, I ask the council to consider adding one sentence and the city opposes, reading, "The city opposes state, county, or federal policies which reduce or inhibit local, comma, community-based business viability." That's my motion to add that sentence.
I would second it.
Can you say that again? Or can you?
Yes, under, there is, there is no city opposes to the section on economic development. And I'd like to add, "The city opposes state, county, or federal policies which reduce or inhibit local, comma, community-based business viability."
So, Susan, that's attachment A, four of six. He's reading the economic development section. And it says, "The city supports, but we have no oppose." And so Bill has put in an opposition statement.
Okay, okay.
Okay, are we ready for vote? Vote on them up? Gail?
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
All right, thank you, Gail. All right, and then H?
H, Mayor, is, I think it's just an opportunity here to discuss our, our city trolley program, period. So we're going to remove this trolley from service and surplus it. But, you know, we've got 2035 and 2040 guidelines coming up regarding converting our trolley system to either electric or hydrogen, one or the other. And Gold Coast Transit, we just approved the fleet management plan and Transit Asset Management Plan. And so what I'd be asking in conjunction with this is that we direct staff, when we direct our public works director, to actually create a fleet management plan and bring it back to council regarding how many we have, the age of that, that we have, and to actually start looking into electric and hydrogen vehicles and joining other cities that are doing this, that have small services like we. And then the other part of that is, there's actually a state program that's, is being initiated now where they're trying to do bulk buying of these forty-foot buses. For instance, an all-electric bus that we priced came in at over $800,000 per bus. And a hydrogen bus came in over a million per bus. So I think, obviously, obviously, as more of these buses are built, the pricing is going to come down, but they're still not a cheap date. So I think that it's going to behoove us, instead of waiting to actually get proactive and start thinking about, one, where are they? Two, how much they cost? And how we're going to go about it. Are there grants? Are there, you know, what are the ways that we can go after additional funding to help us meet the needs of our trolley service? Or it might be something that we phase out and figure another plan, but I'm sure all of us in Ohio would love to keep the trolley service. So that's all I'd like to, to add to the consent item. I have no problem with the surplusing of this, but I do think we need to investigate the, what is left and how we're going to move forward in the future. So I would move to approve consent item H.
Okay. Ryan, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I just want to say, oh, gosh, it was probably fifteen years ago. I stood in front of the council back when you were allowed to do that. And they were declaring a, right when the Libby Bowl was getting done. And it hadn't, it hadn't been done yet, but the pledges had come in. And I remember getting all this great feedback and the council was so excited and they proceeded to not care the next day, didn't do anything with it. So I'm gonna bring it up again. Now I get a little, now I got one of the votes. But the trolley, if there is an option, because I heard in the last go-around, I know this one isn't in very good shape, but that we didn't get like anything for it and that we were actually donating it somewhere. The Libby Bowl Foundation and other entities in town, especially events at the bowl, if we ever want to not have to build extra parking for it, having a surplus trolley is the way to circulate, and there's already a drawn-up parking plan inside the public parking lots that would stop at the arcade, drop people off right next to restaurants and bars. And I know we're not there yet with COVID, but I just want to say that it's been an idea of mine for a long time, and when the bowl is really busy, I think that it would be incredibly beneficial if you wanted to get people to park at Park and Ride, if you wanted it to be able to get, like, the lot that's by my office, that's small, even there, just to circulate through. And what would really happen is when people would, when they get there, they'd probably take the trolley. When they leave, they'd probably just disperse and, you know, might have dinner or go to a bar or go do something downtown. All that would be good. And when they have to walk back like that, it might actually give the merchants a little bit of extra foot traffic at the right times. So I don't know if that's an option. I know I saw this in here. I was actually going to pull it, Randy, so I appreciate you speaking up. I don't want to make this overly complicated, but if there was an alternative use that exceeds what we're going to get for the value of this, because it doesn't sound like it's much, I just want to keep that option open, because I think it could make a difference for some of the stuff we were doing and some of the stuff we want to do.
All right. Is it? Yeah, I like that idea. I don't like the idea that people are too lazy to walk from the parking lot where your office is to the park. That I don't like. But I could see if we had, I could see it being used in various ways. I'd have to think it through. But, you know, for instance, if we had weekend parking at Nordoff for some event or, you know, further away, or can it be used? I mean, I like your idea, but I just don't like to think that people are that lazy. So, do we need a report on the waste? And I, I mean, that would mean that we would store it somewhere. Is that what it means? And, and then use it for special events? Because that would be one way that we could have less traffic on Ojai Day. I can think of all kinds of days, Earth Day, where people could, where we could use that trolley for special events. But that is, that's the idea.
I completely agree. If it worked, if we could figure that out. And I always thought that, you know, this, again, this all happened right when the bowl was starting to kind of, the idea was starting to gain a lot of traction. And I don't think it's been too bad a problem at the bowl, but I, I also, I've also sat in the information desk that Jamie Fleming put out. I volunteered there before on a bowl day. And I can't tell you how many cars pulled up and said, "We don't know where you park. How do we get into the bowl?" Because, you know, if you get there, like most places, it says parking for the bowl. We have nothing that says where to quite go. So I, I don't know. And of course, we have other trolleys and they may be available at that time, but it was always, it was always an idea, too, to put it off on maybe a different organization that might have it and take care of it and be able to use it for their purposes, since we couldn't use it as a city anymore.
Okay, so, so selling it is not a decision we have to make tonight, is that correct? We could explore.
We'd have to make that, yeah, we'd have to make that decision tonight. And there's a couple of ways we could do it. One is if you want to approve it, but we, but we can hold off and, and explore some of those options, or we could just bring it back. But I'll answer two, two of the questions real quick, though. One is, so this is our sixth trolley. So even surplusing this, we'll have five. And so we could do some of these things using some of the other better-conditioned trolleys. And then the, probably the estimated value of auctioning it off is probably going to be between maybe seven to $12,000. So it's not going to, you know, the, the, the value isn't going to, you know, be a huge amount that, that we're losing out on if we wanted to explore some options. So I think the idea, the one that caught my attention, as far as for our use, we have five other trolleys that are probably in better condition. But the idea of maybe we're seeing it, one of the other nonprofits or the chamber, or someone would want to use it, that's something we can explore.
Well, you know, I, I could see a situation where I have that, and, you know, I'm just spitballing here, but let's say we had a dollar surcharge on tickets at the bowl and it paid for, you know, part of subsidizing a traffic plan. And I know way back then, I brought this up, and Bob Daddy had drawn something to get from parking lots, but the city's a little different now. But we, you know, but there was kind of a circular pattern that would make sense. So anyway. At least, if it's an option, I would, I would love to see it come to fruition, but if not, nobody do.
Yeah.
Mayor, just one last thing on this is also, it'd be interesting to receive a report or report as to why it's being surplus and can it be used for the things that we've just discussed? You know, there's a reason it's being surplus. It's either not safe, it just can't be because it's eight years old. There's got to be other reasons besides that. So that would be nice, too, is to have Greg bring it back and explain to us the surplusing process, the why. I remember last time we discussed this, I think Santa Barbara has trolleys, too, and that they were going to be purchasing our old ones or something of that nature. So. But I think these are all good ideas.
Remember, it was sold off for parts. And I also remember that, I think, back then, when I brought it up, there was an issue with the trolleys that we had because they were from grant money, like, they couldn't be used for anything commercial or something. It was a weird rule that it wouldn't work real well with the bowl. So we, you know, times have changed. Maybe it's, you know, maybe the best way is using the trolleys we have, but I, I saw this and thought the idea might be worth a little breath of life again.
Great.
I love that. And Jamie Fleming has been talking to some of the merchants recently about having some kind of, you know, trolley or that would go up and down and take people, especially from the inn, which would be really cool. So. All right, we have a motion. Randy, you made a motion?
There's the motion to, to develop a fleet management plan and then to return at a later time with more information on this surplus?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Great. All right, Gail, may we please have the roll call?
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, moving, it's 6:52. Can we move to public communication? No? Gail?
Let me check if we have, we have one person who, who signed up. Let me see if they're there. Oh, they're not here yet. We had one person who signed up for public communications, but they haven't signed into the meeting yet. Our agenda says public communications at 7:00 PM, so it's your call, but if you want to do another item and come back, see if they've come into the meeting, then that's up to you.
All right, thanks, Gail. Yeah, let's move forward to discussion, to the COVID. Number two, James, mayor of the staff report? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So we'll have a brief update today. But we wanted to, you know, we've been kind of tracking the case numbers and providing kind of that information. We'll start with that. And we'll talk about some of the changes with vaccines and with the, the state's changes to the reopening process. So we'll, we'll kind of try to cover all those, because we're getting a lot of questions on those, and hopefully it'll help people to understand. So I think most people probably have heard that the case numbers have really, really significantly come down, you know, and it's a positive step that, as you can see here, was almost monthly, we were having a doubling of the case number, total cases and the cases in the 93023 zip code. And now that has dropped off dramatically, where there's only been less than 2,000 new cases in the last few weeks and less, less than a dozen new cases in the 93023 over the last few weeks. So, so that trend on a county level, state level, but also local level, that, you know, the case numbers are coming down, hospitalizations coming down, ICU bed capacity is, is getting better. And, and, you know, positive, positive steps there. So, so what that means is that the case rate is coming down. You can see here that we are at 10.6 cases over a seven-day average per 100,000 residents. We talked about this last meeting, but to get to red tier at this point, which is the next step in the reopening, we would need to drop under seven cases per 100,000 residents. Governor, Governor Newsom also announced that, that that metric may change in coming weeks as they roll out more vaccines. And this, this metric may actually increase so that cities are able to move through the tiers a little more quickly, or counties are able to move through the tiers a little more quickly. So right now, for the first time in a long time, we had gone to all purple tier, our most restrictive in all of our key areas. But you can see here, our seven-day positive, testing positivity rate is now dropping to orange tier for the first time in quite a while. And our health equity testing positivity rate has dropped to red tier. So the only number right now that's holding us back from, from moving forward a tier is the seven-day average case rate. And even that's getting very close at this point. So all the statistics that the state uses and the county uses to measure that are trending in the positive direction. And I think that we'll be seeing some change, some positive changes in the next couple of weeks. We went over this in-depth last meeting, but I'll just briefly touch on it, that as a reminder, when we say moving from purple tier to red tier, what, what changes? And it's these items that are involved. So retail stores can increase their capacity. Restaurants can open indoors with a 25% capacity. Gyms can reopen indoors with a 10% capacity. Movie theaters can reopen indoors with a 25% capacity, and museums, zoos, and aquariums can reopen indoor with a 25% capacity. So what, that's what we're trending to at this point. The other big change since last meeting, actually just recently, I think it was Friday that, that the state announced this, is that prior to that announcement, whether we were in purple tier or red tier, outdoor live events were not allowed. But that's been tweaked, and the state has announced that effective April 1st, 2021, outdoor live events with assigned seats can begin according to these restrictions per each tier. So at worst, if we are purple tier, which by April 1st, we don't, we don't, it's looking more and more likely that we won't be purple tier, we'll probably be red tier. But at worst, purple tier would be that 100 people or less. But they have to be visitors from within 120 miles. But 100 people or less with advanced reservations can attend a live event. And so the, an outdoor live event, I'm sorry. And so that's our, right now, what's looking like the worst-case scenario, barring any unforeseen major change. What's looking more likely is by April 1st, that we'd actually be probably a red tier at this point, which would be actually live outdoor events with a maximum of 20% occupancy. And the, the big limitation that everybody's talking about, people may have heard about this on the news over the weekend, is that it will be in-state visitors only is going to be the, the interesting restriction on that. And then just as we move into other tiers, orange and yellow, the occupancy can increase little by little up, up to a maximum of 67% in yellow tier. So that is, that's a big change. That's a complete change from prior, where most of the tiers did not allow these events. These are now potentially allowed, and it opens up the door for some of the events that, that we would typically have in Ojai as well. And so to that extent, we've been meeting with all of the event holders. We've been essentially meeting with them and telling them to start preparing their plans and their protocols. And that will work with them, and we all need to be flexible. And, you know, depending on what tier we're in at the time of these events, depending on how the case number looks statewide in, in Ventura County, we be prepared to have strict protocols. And hopefully, if things go well, then everything can be a little bit easier. But so far, the groups we've been working with that have indicated that they, they're going to try to put some protocols in place and, and try to have events is potentially, Earth Day is being planned, Art in the Park is currently being planned, Fourth of July events are currently being planned. The Sterling Concerts, sorry, I put contracts, I meant concerts. They've been postponed until July, but those could potentially be held under these new regulations, just with, with some, with some protocols in place. We also, we kept waiting for good news to start talking about our 100th anniversary plans. And, and I think this is the first meeting where it feels like we have some good news, so we'll start talking about those a little bit more. We didn't want to talk about it when, when things were negative. But where we've been, we reached out and the museum reached out to us, and so we're going to work with the museum to start trying to have some, some safe events for that as well. And then Ojai Day, I would say we're very preliminarily working on that as far as just seeing what vendors and businesses are interested in, in coming out this year. So we'll have more reports on that as we get closer. But, you know, the, the big changes from before that change to the tiers on Friday, most of these events, the answer was just, we didn't know if they could happen. Now it's changed to they're looking very likely that they would be able to happen in some form. So. And so the other big, you know, news and the big topic is vaccines. Nordoff High School is still doing the vaccine clinic Wednesdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. That's operated by the Ojai Valley Hospital. They have appointments going up every week on VenturaCountyRecovers.org. And so I had heard this morning, and I'm not sure if it changed, that there were appointments available for those eligible. So it's something I would suggest checking Monday and Tuesday if, if you are in the group of people eligible to get vaccinated. The big change that's coming up on March 15th is that individuals 16 to 64 who have any of these severe health conditions could be eligible to be vaccinated. And so as we get closer to that, people with these conditions should start checking VenturaCountyRecovers.org on Monday mornings to try to get appointments. And we've heard that people are able to get appointments fairly, fairly quickly in, at the Ojai Clinic, which is really nice, that people don't have to figure out how to travel out of the valley to get these vaccines. We're continuing COVID testing every Wednesday through, through the end of the month. And we'll announce if that gets extended. But it's every Wednesday from 9:00 to 3:30 at Sarzadi Park. And we're hearing from people this, the last couple of weeks especially, that there's essentially no line at this point, and it's walk up and get tested. So anybody, you know, even though the vaccine's here, anybody who hasn't gotten the vaccine, if you think you've been exposed or you're, you're worried about it, you can, you know, essentially walk in and get tested in 15 minutes. So that's an, an important tool still to, to help prevent the spread. So. There's a couple other just quick announcements. One is that on March 4th last week, Governor Newsom signed an executive order that extended the authorization for cities and other agencies to, to have the eviction moratoriums for commercial renters impacted by the pandemic. And he extended that through June 30th, 2021. So we get a lot of questions still about if there's eviction moratoriums in place, and Governor Newsom has allowed that to extend through June 30th. It also extends protections against price gouging, which we have had, you know, not recently, but early on in the pandemic, we did have reports about price gouging that we had investigated and worked with stores on. So if people are seeing those things happen, it's still prohibited, and they should, they can notify us or other agencies like the county. So. The other big news, both on an individual level for our residents, but also for the city, is I believe Thursday, the American Rescue Plan Act is supposed to be voted on, and it looks like it's likely to get approved. It's going to provide stimulus payments to individuals, unemployment, extended benefits, some school funding, and then the, the critical thing for the city is, you know, we are, we are at one year this Saturday. We declared a emergency on Friday, March 13th last year. So we're hitting one year, and we still not received one cent of, of funding from the, the state or federal for city services, which, you know, most people are aware, the cities have done the bulk of the enforcement and implementation of COVID orders. So after one year, it's looking likely that city funding will, will finally be provided. We've lost three to four million dollars in revenue. And we will receive 1.3 million, almost 1.4 million. So that is going to be critical for us, but we are in a unique situation where most cities, because it's based on population, they're receiving funding that makes up for their lost funding, their lost revenue, I mean. And we are going to be, like we always are, a unique city in that we're going to, we're still going to end up losing substantially more than we receive. So we're still going to have a, a hole to dig out of. And it's, you know, but it's a critical first step. So the other point, as, as indicated on this slide, is we had, we projected this out a few times, but we started with $3.4 million for emergency reserves. We're down to about 650,000. So that 1.3 million will be helpful, but it's not going to, to put us back to where we need to be to meet our reserve goal. And, but it's, you know, it's, at this point, we'll be glad to receive anything, just like probably most, most residents and most community members. So. So with that, those are the key updates for the COVID response. And I'll take any, happy to answer any questions.
Phil?
James, two questions. One is, the listing of healthcare workers as being eligible is in many cases in Ojai not actual reality. What's happening is that people who are caregivers for many elderly households in this community go to get tested and go, "Oh, you're not a part of an institution." Therefore, you're not eligible. Even with a doctor's note saying, "This person, I certify this person is a necessary caregiver." Even with a doctor's note saying this person, I certify this person is a necessary caregiver for the senior citizens in this household. They are being denied getting the vaccine. So basically, it's discriminating against assisted care in homes. And I think that's a real problem. And I don't know if it's going on generally, but it's certainly going on in this valley where there's a growing level of frustration among healthcare workers for assisted in-home care are are being denied the vaccines right now. I know that for a fact. I've heard many stories. I don't understand it. I really don't, especially if you have, if you could be certified with a doctor's note that in fact you are, you know, not making this up, you actually are doing the service, that the county is doing that. All right. And the second question I have is, I don't understand the rationale of saying in-seat concessions only as being somehow safer than physically distanced concessions, especially if you could have a rule saying you you can't get up during the performance, right? You've got to but you're going to have be able to, you know, you have to get your concessions ahead of time physically distanced. But they're saying you can't do that, you got to have people roaming the the seat aisles. I don't get it.
Yeah, you that that second part you just added would actually help and we we could try to advocate for that. But what you said about not letting people get up while others are seated. I raised this issue as a question. I asked, you know, some of our public health experts, like what what the logic was for this, and they they stated it was to prevent people from getting up, you know, and walking across the row in front of other people and potentially breathing on the person in front or in back of them. But I think
They'll have a concessionaire doing the same thing.
Right. And I think your point of of if there was a rule saying, you know, that it was designated times or, you know, before the event and after the event or or, you know, intermission.
Maybe have more frequent intermissions as part of the rule.
Yeah, and you know, I brought it up and the the response I got was that, which is true, it's, you know, the states announced this, but they haven't actually up until noon today was the last time I checked, they haven't actually released, you know, defined guidelines for these events. And so
What about denying vaccines to healthcare workers that are in private assisted care capacity?
Yeah, and that one, that one I can raise as an issue to the to the count, or I can, I could try to bring that up to the county. The language, there was language in there that in the COVID guideline or the vaccine guidelines about who they considered to be an eligible healthcare worker and who wasn't. And there was kind of, you know, there was some gray area there, so we can raise that as an issue.
There's no ifs, ands or buts. In how in in-home assisted care, healthcare workers are not being allowed to get the vaccines right now unless they're in some other eligible group. I know that for
Yeah, we'll raise that with the county. I've heard, I had heard that as well, and I looked at the language and the language, the language was interesting. But you know, maybe not, maybe not, not super clear.
Randy, have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to tag onto what Bill was saying. First of all, when you're associated with a care system, you're trained and you're certified. And there are certain, there are specific ways to lift elderly people, proper techniques, and they're trained in that, and they're certified in that. You know, my mother-in-law had, we had caregivers for her for five years here in Ojai. So the question would be, one, how can we get these caregivers certified in some capacity? That'd be the first question. And then, and because one of the reasons they're not, they can't get shots is they're not licensed, they're unskilled. So how can we get them skilled and how can we get them classified? So that in the event of something like this occurring again, that it's done, that would be the question to ask the county. And then, you know, when I look at the the fact that all of the cities in our county are all going to be receiving millions of dollars, including the county, which will receive multimillion dollars, is how do we, what type of letter is it appropriate? But how do we reach out to the county and and ask for some additional funding? And how can we identify the areas that we need the funding for? So it was interesting when we were talking about the seating capacity and concessionaires moving around, I thought, well, maybe we could get some funding for these bazookas that shoot hot dogs in the stands, you know, or T-shirts or, but I'm just, but on a serious note, the county is going to receive millions, multi-millions of dollars in this package. And surely we can write some form of a letter requesting some additional support and actually maybe even contact ours, our county supervisor, Matt LeVere, and get him on board. But we're going to receive the least out of the 10 cities, by far the least. And Fillmore and Santa Paul aren't too far behind. So
Yeah, it's just very, it's very hard to explain to people because like other cities, you know, when everybody remembers the Ben Franklin fight, you know, that we we had where we we said, hey, our our mom and pops are all we have and we need to support them. You know, the the city council took that stance early on. And the reality was for all the other cities, they kept Walmart open, they kept Target open, they kept, you know, Costco open. So their sales tax, their their revenue drivers were not impacted the same way ours was, where for us, the two or three big businesses in town were just shut down. And so it really is hard to explain to people. And that's where, you know, to your point is we could figure out how to how to advocate with the right people on this. It seems like people are understanding that small cities that don't have mom and pops were disproportionately impacted by this. And so I've been hearing it a lot lately. Cities say, well, great, this this revenue will fix our budget gap, you know. For Ojai, this revenue will not fix our budget gap. It will, it will help a little bit, you know, which is
I I have no problem asking them to waive the police services fees for this year either. I mean, there's a multitude of things that we can ask for. And and you know, that old adage, if you don't ask, you don't receive. We need to start asking.
Yeah, I think I think that's fair. We'll, we'll start putting some thought into advocating as soon as it gets approved.
Any other questions? Gail, any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, thank you, James. Once again, you basically are a doctor at this point, right? Did you ever think you'd know so much about medicine? So
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for keeping us safe and being ahead of the curve and taking care of business. Thank you.
Mayor? Jim Selman's in the waiting room. Did we want to move him forward?
Well,
and get him on board before we go to five, or how do we want to do this? Is that acceptable?
Before we go to four?
Five and six?
Yeah, sure, yeah, yeah, we can go right now. Sure.
Mayor Sticks, we still have public communications?
Okay, can we do that? We'll do public communication, then we'll move on to the workshop.
Yeah.
That's the next one. Well, we have, there you go, okay.
Okay, so we have one person for public communications. It's Angelo Haynes. Angelo, you should be able to unmute yourself and go ahead and speak.
Hello, good evening, City Council of Ojai. My name is Angelo, I'm a private citizen. I'd like to just go on the public record and express some of my distaste with the way that the Ventura County Sheriff's Office Services contract is being negotiated. I believe that one meeting last summer in which public comment was solicited is not enough public input into such a very critical service at a time when our country is incredibly divided and politically stratified based on this particular issue. I would like to make sure that I repeat and reiterate my demands. The city should pass by either ordinance or resolution, the creation of a city commission composed of community members of diverse skills, backgrounds and ethnicities to control and or have greater input into the VCO, VCSO Police Services Contract in our community. The Ventura County Sheriff's Office must obtain and obligate all deputies working for the city of Ojai to wear body worn cameras, and they must be used by all deputies while on duty. The conditions of the Ventura County jails and those currently incarcerated must be improved, including improvement of healthcare administration and the handling of mental illness within the jail. A plan must be created with public input and civilian oversight should be implemented to execute these measures. The formation of an unarmed crisis intervention team should be created to specifically deal with calls related to mentally ill subjects and those dealing with substance abuse. One example of this type of program is the Kahoots Program in Oregon, which has been operating for 30 years. They have had to call for police backup less than 1% of the time, and the program has saved the police departments over 15 million dollars a year. Other examples of programs are Cure Violence and Advanced Peace. I would like to see the release of all documents and communications between the Ad-Hoc Committee negotiating new contract with the VCSO for absolute transparency moving forward. We'd like to create a department of separate unarmed specialized officers who lack arrest power to serve the community during traffic patrol. We'd also love to see a removal of all Blue Lives Matter stickers, flags, clothing, masks, or any other likenesses from Ojai Police Department Office officer uniforms and clothing while on duty and from patrol vehicles. It is only right that the police department, which is meant to serve as a neutral body between citizens in the country, be as neutral as possible. And when one side wears Blue Lives Matter stickers and the police wear those stickers, they are obviously showing which side they are on. We must end all voluntary collaboration and transfers between the VCSO and ICE as well. I believe that Ojai community deserves to be more informed and directly involved in these negotiations for police services, which each affect all of us as community members. I believe in a brighter future, one in which the dark injustices of the past die in the light of justice of today. Let's band together and reshape our public safety. Let's stand strong as a community and address the issues we all face together. I believe that these values are in a complete line and alignment with the city of Ojai's progressive values. And I believe that Betsy, her leadership is definitely what we need to push this forward. And I hope that I can get the cooperation of the entire council on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelo. Any other comments, Gail?
No further comments.
Okay, all right. Well, then, moving on to number three, the workshop.
Yeah, you're right, Susan, sorry about that.
And I'll give a quick introduction while we let Jim in. So we have a workshop scheduled for Saturday morning at 9:00 AM. We wanted to take the opportunity to ask, and and Jim was was willing to come kind of explain the kind of the plan for the goal setting and then to let council ask any questions or give any feedback. So with that, I'll up there, I I didn't see you for a second, Jim, sorry about that. So with that, I'll I'll hand it over to to Jim to kind of give us the background.
Good, well, first of all, good evening, everyone. James asked that I take no more than about 10 minutes here to give you an overview of kind of my approach and where I'm coming from and how I facilitate these kinds of conversations. I'm going to try to do that in five minutes and then leave some room for questions. Briefly, my background is I was a partner in a Big Eight accounting firm in 1975. And I became fascinated with the question of why is it so difficult to implement change? And as a consequence, I gave up my partnership, came to California and began working with a lot of different people and researchers and so forth and so on, and was one of the first two or three people that began to talk about organizational culture. Prior to 1975, that concept did not exist. Some of you may remember that later on in around the 80s, the word paradigm began to emerge as a way of accounting for why things tend to to change very slowly or not at all, and why it is so difficult to implement change. I'm generally credited for being the first person to distinguish coaching in the context of business and started a university in Argentina to teach coaching, the first accredited program of that sort. So I've been a participant and a kind of pioneer for about almost 40 years in the area of transformation and specifically developing a body of knowledge around that that's very, very rigorous and very grounded in mostly philosophy and some science. But it's been practiced in thousands of different organizations and is and and is a different approach, a different mindset for approaching typical traditional kinds of activities like planning. So that's sort of my background. In terms of the workshop on Saturday, my my context for everything I do is leadership. So in my view, any any planning, but specifically getting together as the council is an exercise in leadership. And it's not merely an, not merely a planning exercise. As a consequence, I view leadership as being about creating the future. I don't view leadership as sort of overseeing a process. And that's been a foundation for virtually everything I do. The other thing that's fundamentally central to my work and would be central in our conversation on Saturday is that I don't believe anything happens in the absence of action. Action is what produces the reality we live in now. Action is what's going to produce whatever the future is. One of our contributions is to distinguish that our work or your work as leaders gets done in conversations. That's the playing field of leadership. And it's the domain in which actual actions can be generated to produce one future versus another future. The at the core of this is the idea that commitment is fundamental. Commitment is a is action in conversation. All of us have been able to hear and participate in conversations that talk about change but don't change anything. And most of us have participated in conversations that actually do change something. So I view Saturday as an opportunity for you to engage in a conversation, a meaningful conversation with each other, specifically around what is the future that you intend that be created for Ojai? And that that future then is is backed up by your commitment. Now, I have a distinction I use quite often called alignment, that at the end of the day, regardless of how you get to a decision or whatever disagreement you may have amongst yourselves, once you make a decision, once you make a commitment, that's the voice of leadership, the voice of leadership in the community. So in my judgment, what what I understand you're trying to do on Saturday is to give a voice to articulate what is the future that you, the council, are speaking for and standing for in terms of the future. Now, how big of a timeframe you want to look at is your choice. I recommend it not be too long. I think I think you could articulate a a vision of five or or maximum of 10 years, but probably five years would be a large enough timeframe to be able to give voice to what is our vision for our community. Now, again, speaking it and saying it is one thing, but the real value of getting together and doing this work is to be profoundly and deeply and authentically committed to whatever you all generate and come up with. In the absence of that, I think you're wasting your time. Now, this is not about making happy words and putting a slogan on on the wall. This is about generating a reality in the future and then committing to that reality. And that's fundamentally what I understand the work of of the day is. Now, when I work on vision with people, I make a couple of distinctions. And the way I see this will happen is at the beginning of our session on Saturday, I'll take a sometime half hour, maybe maybe 45 minutes to just try to get us all talking the same language to be able to have a common understanding of some fundamental terms. So for example, a vision in my work is grounded as a future, as a possibility. The vision is not a goal. The vision is the future as a possibility. And then if the if the leadership is committed to that possibility, the second step would then be to talk about how does, how do we organize projects, priorities, commitments in order to manifest or fulfill that possibility? The value of a vision is not in the distant future, it's in the present. It should organize, and the reason for having a vision is it should organize priorities. It should or it should help inform and inspire actually transcending differences. It should be able to bring people together in a way that we are involved in co-creating the future of Ojai. We're not, we're not just administering. And that's really the 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 reality that I see could be created on Saturday. Normally, I would be doing this in a two or three day workshop. I work with top leadership teams and very large corporations. And and in my view, this is the work of leadership. This is not a a side, a side conversation. This is at the core of what I think leadership is about. Now, once the, once the future as a possibility is articulated, and here it's going to be a little clumsy, because normally we take time to try to do some wordsmithing and so forth. But I think what we're going to do is declare a way of what I call a conversation for possibility to get the sense of the of the vision, which then I think can subsequently be wordsmithed by the staff. And and I can support you in that as well. But even before we get to that, I would recommend that you then, as a council, first of all, align on that vision, or at least the broad parameters. Secondly, that you then do something I call the Merlin approach, where you then take the case that that is already real. Don't ask the question, what are we going to do to get there? Actually, put on the future at like a new new suit or or dress, and then begin to ask the question, how did we get here? So if you could imagine standing in 2020, say, 2030 or 2007 or some whatever the timeframe is you choose and say, our our community is now the way we committed to it being. It's already that way. Then orient yourself to 2021 and say, what did we do? How did we get here? And this is where you can telescope into specific goals and specific actions and specific milestones. So what did we do in 2021 in the process of accomplishing our vision? What did we do in 2022 in the process of accomplishing our vision? What did we do in 2023 in the process of accomplishing our vision? You could even speculate and play some mind games in terms of, and if we had different members of the council in the next election cycle, how did we pass the torch or how did we convey or maintain the continuity of the vision in in orienting new members to the council? You can do all kinds of what-if games in terms of speculating on the process by which you accomplish the future. The future, and there's a lot more I can say about this, but for right now, that's generally speaking how I see that the day will go. I think we've got maybe three hours maximum to have this conversation. I would ask all of you, assuming you want to facilitate this, to come to the meeting committed to accomplishing something. Don't come to the meeting to see what we accomplish. Bring your commitment to the meeting. Leave your roles and constituencies sort of on the sideline. Leave leave egos outside the door and just be willing to have a a powerful, compelling conversation amongst yourselves, appreciating that our future as a community is at stake, but our future of our community is also whatever possibility we can generate. So from there, you'll then have taken a step in the process of beginning to build a leadership conversation in Ojai and one which I think from there you can, you know, take in a lot of different directions. So let me just stop that overview and and invite you to ask me questions or anything you'd like to know.
Is it? Well, first of all, I love everything you said, and I resonate with it, especially the part about the paradigm shift. I hope we get to talk about that. One of the things that I'm sure you're acutely aware that one of the factors that sometimes, what's the word, I feel holds the council back is the fact that we have these this Brown Act where we can't really discuss except for one other with one other person. Is that making sense?
I agree with it, yes.
But I know that you are. But at this meeting, for the first time, we can talk freely with all five council members. Because it's a public meeting and the public, the public is not going, the public is not going to participate, correct? But they can listen in. Is that is that right?
There will be, per the Brown Act, an opportunity for public comment, but we're going to try to to keep the timeframe to a minimum and put it towards the end of the meeting is what we're hoping to do.
Okay.
And the full discussion will be in in front of the public, of course. It used to be the case that we could have council workshops not in public, and then that got outlawed as some other communities took advantage of that. So unfortunately, that's why the requirement is that it be in public. But of course, as noted, the goal is to facilitate a productive conversation among the council, so the public will be present to watch and then can participate in their public comment moment.
Yeah, I think it's so interesting, the timing, because we're having a public workshop tomorrow on the future of Ojai. And so this is all happening at the right time. So I'm very excited about it. I don't really have any questions except for that. I just, I like to be assured that if we need to go longer, that we can, and that's what it says here on our council on the report. You know, I would hate to get to at noon and we're just really starting to get somewhere so that, you know, I'm going to plan. If we need, I'm going to plan my own life so that if we need more time, we can take it.
I'm I will be prepared to stay longer. The other thing is, you know, with respect to the Brown Act, it's gonna, it's awkward and uncomfortable to really be authentic in a public in a public space. And one of the questions I would encourage you to come to the meeting with is, are you willing to to drop some of the formality in our normal, our normal way of relating to see if we can actually generate something original and new? You know, it's difficult to talk about elephants on the table or whatever issues may exist. But at the same time, if we don't, probably they won't go away and we won't make any progress and we'll continue to maintain whatever process and progress we've made. There's nothing wrong with the way it's working as far as I'm concerned, except that it's always a function of relative to what's normal, you may be very good relative to what's possible. We're all beginners. So the question is, which which way are we going to approach our job as leaders to take on the the bold or more challenging possibilities? Or to stay inside our comfort zone and inside the box and inside the the reasonable framework in order to continue doing what we do? But those are choices that we have to make. They're not mandates and there's nothing you can do. One of my, one of my foundational beliefs is that only the individual can make a commitment. Nobody can ever force a commitment on anybody, but none of us can fulfill our commitments alone. So it's the it's the paradox of of team and individual. It's a paradox of organization and individual. It's a paradox of how do we co-create a future together, even though we may have disagreements about how we approach it or or even sometimes what that future is. But but we work out all of that in conversations with each other. That's the only place that it can happen.
I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, Jim. What a gift you are giving all of us. So exciting. Love your book. Thank you. And really looking forward to to creating a future. So thank you.
Good. And any more questions or I mean, speaking skeptical is fine, Bill?
Yeah, um. We're not amongst ourselves in public. Let's be clear about that. This is all a public record. So I think it's a bit of a misnomer to say it's amongst ourselves. Because it's a matter of of, you know, discussing, you know, broad issues on a lot of different levels. And I guess my concern is if we have fundamental philosophical differences, that doesn't mean we can't work together. We've been working together. And I guess what I'm a little concerned about is saying, well, before we move on to accomplishing, you know, the task of setting goals, that we have to have an aligned vision amongst ourselves. We that may be something that if we have profound philosophical differences among us, we can be committed to a process of decision making without necessarily all having an aligned vision. I'm wondering if it's a goal that is a little ambitious in terms of a one day or early morning, you know, a three hour process in terms of getting to the task of trying to set some goals and trying to modify the goals that we've already have. So I guess I'm a little worried about being a little too ambitious in a public setting in a limited time to be able to come to a realistically to come to an aligned vision as opposed to
You may be absolutely
setting goals.
You may be absolutely right, Bill. I have the same concern. You know, the amount of time we take, whether it's three hours or four hours is is uncomfortably short. How much can get accomplished is a function of how vulnerable are we willing to be? You know, including the fact that it's a public of a public forum. I have no issue with people having different philosophies and different commitments. That's my work. That's what I'm, that's what I'm paid for. Because you don't have to agree with each other to make commitments. You just have to be aligned. Now, what I mean by alignment is either you share the common commitment or you're willing to commit to other people's commitment to that, or you're opposed to that. And if you're opposed to that, then it's either agree to disagree or at least be public about your opposition. There's, there's no, there's no, there's no attempt on my part, at least, to try to force people into some kind of lockstep. You know, raise your hand and say amen. What I am, what I am saying is it's an opportunity. It's an opportunity to spend some hours is to try to accomplish some kind of a of a transcendent conversation that that is larger than we might normally have in this kind of a forum. Brown Act notwithstanding, and and expose those differences in philosophy. If you have different philosophies, get them on the table. And I find that 99% of the time, those can be either synthesized, reconciled, or you can create even some new breakthrough in terms of how you can have your cake and eat it too. I, there's no guarantee that would happen. Is it a lot to try to bite? I certainly is. But but the other thing is setting a goal, there's an old saying about a vision without, sorry, that a vision without action is just a dream. But action without a vision is a nightmare. In my experience, if you don't have a vision, you're going to be trapped in the in the trapped in a process, historically determined process, what I call the historical drift. And you'll have, you can make progress. You can absolutely make progress, but you're making progress off of a off of a given foundation of what's possible that locks you into what's what's historically feasible. And if you only produce what's historically feasible, then your future is going to be a continuation of the present. And if that's okay with you, then you don't need this meeting.
I guess what I would argue is that there's different levels of overlapping vision. It doesn't have to be a global, all encompassing thing in order to make progress on, say, do we want to look at how we are approaching certain zoning categories or something like that? Because part of what the goal setting is all about is to set a structure for interacting between the council and staff in terms of moving forward on particular this allocation of scarce staff time. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that I appreciate what you're the ambition, but I don't think we should get trapped in having to get to some sort of global alignment before we move forward on some, you know, practical aspects of of governing. We've all made a commitment by standing for election as elected officials. That's a start right there. And so I think that it's important not to be caught into a caught into a, to use your word, a paradigm of having to get to some sort of predetermined aligned vision before we move forward in terms of some practical aspects of our governing responsibilities. And maybe I'm overstating.
Oh, I think I think I think your point of view is is very legitimate. I guess my only comment there, that's why I tried to emphasize that a vision is not a goal. It's a context. It's a context. So if you're going to do, if you're going to do goal setting, what's the context in which you do that?
And there's different levels of overlap of congruent visions for different types of goals.
No question about it. And I'm just simply saying that you, the council, have to make that choice. What is the, what is the context that we're all committed to? Or that we can align with anyway, whether it's lower or higher or, you know, that's, that's, that's what gets ground up in the process. I don't disagree with your concern. Randy?
Well, I'm glad we're doing it via Zoom because I don't want to get this touchy feeling all over my body. But Jim, I, you know, you and I, we, you know, we're, we're good friends. We've had really some really deep conversations. I clearly understand the goal of a vision. In fact, if I remember correctly, when I ran the first time, I stated it clearly, we didn't have a vision and that we needed to create a vision for this community. My concern, and what's interesting is you'll notice the difference from three guys speaking, Ryan will speak in a minute, I'm hoping, versus two women speaking is there's just, there's, there's different ways of how we're going to look at things and how we achieve things. Setting that aside, my concern is three hours isn't long enough to do a true visioning to create a true vision for our community. Maybe that's what I'm trying to say is I just don't see us hap, I don't see it happening in three hours. And I would think from, and I'll speak for me, I won't speak for anyone else, but my sense of urgency right now is what's going on in the community. And it has nothing, I see the vision, it could be an overriding, yeah, whatever you choose to do to correct things or to, let's say, to better businesses or to help businesses get back on track. If you're aligned in a vision, then use that vision to help you set the goals to get those businesses to that vision. I I think I get that. The problem is, I just see that there's so much in front of us right now that has nothing to do you know, again, I'm going to speak for myself, that doesn't necessarily have to do with the vision. It has to do with managing the resources and managing the the conditions that we're presently in. So.
By the way, Randy, I'm perfectly fine if you would rather have that meeting than the meeting about vision. You know, I'm not saying that that's less important. I'm saying, though, that whatever meeting you choose to take on, if you're having big questions and challenges regarding how you organize to manage the city, then you could have that be the topic of the meeting.
No, I get that. That's what I'm trying to say is I'm willing to participate. I have no problem putting forth in collaborating with my fellow council members and the community on a vision for this community. And what is it? The the problem that occurs in all of this is one, again, it's going to be a short period of time. And I would think a visioning opportunity would take weeks, if not months. In fact, I can see it being aligned with the general plan update. The fact that we set aside and create maybe a committee that that creates this vision and we incorporate it into how we're going to move this community forward, like you said, in five years, 10 years, 15 years and 20 years. I don't see that happening in three hours. So that's, that's my only concern.
Well, I said to Bill, I share, I share it, Randy. This is, this is, this isn't, is, it isn't going to happen unless we are very committed coming in.
Right.
And and willing and willing to, you know, expose our biases and points of view to the point that we put it all on the table and see what shows up. By the same token, as I say, that there's nothing magical about this. I also suggested to James that the the council may choose at the end of this session to have another session.
Yeah.
You know, so I don't think there's anything magical about having to do this in a one shot deal.
Right.
But 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 all I'm saying is that the work of the council and the work of leadership gets done in conversations. And I'm prepared to get behind whatever conversation you want to have. But that's a conversation you have to have amongst yourselves. Like, what do we really want to accomplish if we have a few hours offline? You know, what what's going to make, what's going to make it worth our time?
We're not offline. We're not offline.
I understand, which, sorry, offline of the council chamber, so to speak.
Well.
Well, like I said, I'm, I'm for it. Let's, let's do it and let's see what comes from it. That's all you can do is is put one foot in front of the other and see what happens.
Well, let me just make it clear. I'm not trying to sell you on this meeting. I'm saying I'm preparing to support you and facilitate it. And and I'll facilitate whatever meeting you want to have. But you have to decide what
Time is also a scarce resource.
Absolutely.
We have some things we need to get done.
Well, between now and Saturday, I suggest Well, between now and Saturday, I suggest you consider, is this a meeting you want to have?
Well, I, I did, just not necessarily open-ended to some predetermined idea. I mean, I think we, we're all gonna have to kind of control in, in real time what we're doing and why and how. You know, it, it, we can't be put into a position of, well, we haven't gotten that aligned vision yet, so we gotta keep going until we do. That's just not gonna be
I, I start almost every one of my sessions with the question of, is what would you be committed to accomplishing if you weren't limited by what you think limits you?
Limitations are part of reality.
Oh, that's, that's, but limitations aren't absolutes. They're always interpretive. Yeah, so it's
Well, we're getting, that sounds very postmodernist, Jim.
I'll just say this. I mean, I agree with you, Jim. I think that's a great point you brought up. I mean, they, you know, any, anything that's a barrier to anything you want to achieve is built by something that you put up unless it's something that's unachievable. And I believe that we, as a human species and as a group of people, can overcome anything that was put in front of us for that. But I also appreciate that there's different types of organizational structures that lend itself towards different setups for how they succeed. Politics and governance is inherently designed not to be very efficient. That's where the word bureaucracy comes from. The, this is not a purely organizational leadership process, like when you're on a team or you are in a organization where you have a, you know, like, let's say a CEO and a business in one goal oriented. It's, it's more like a, you know, like the way a lot of different government things work, where the idea is that different ideas all combat with each other and cause automatic friction that's built into a system in order to achieve a better result by representing a very diverse and very different swath of life at every single moment. And that's the difficult part. And the Brown Act almost inherently adds to that friction. And we don't have the luxury of all teaming up to agree to everything. We can't talk with three people to even say we have a common vision or goal without all of these parameters, without all this stuff, without it being in public. Right? We can't even have that discussion with even a small trifecta of people and, and have it in a real environment. When, and, and even when we do something in closed session, that's a very limited scope of what we're allowed to do. We end up always, almost inherently, being blamed for doing it in closed session because we're not involving the public on its utmost. It, I, I, you know, I, I, you know, I, I hope we can do something. I would love, you know, to make sure we're focused on things that I know are questions we're gonna have to answer here quickly because we have, I, I just, you know, what keeps me up at night is staring down. We're in the tunnel. We can see the light at the end of the tunnel on what has been a long COVID journey. And that light at the end of the tunnel is both the end of the tunnel and a train coming straight for us. Right? And we know, when we look internally at what we can see, that it has had more of an effect on our community as a government than any other community, community's government. And we also know as residual that that, that same rationale applies to how it's affected our local population or local businesses and all those things. I want to have common, long-term goals that, you know, like I say, like the climate park has, you know, and, and, and I can't tell you how many times I've told James this and Bill too. To me, that's a project that as a council, we have to stand on our tippy toes and try and reach to the top shelf and we can't quite get there. And every government should have one project that they're trying to maybe try and exceed a little bit higher and a little bit further than they're comfortable reaching. It's outside of their comfort zone of paved streets and, you know, keeping the lights on and the everyday mundane stuff. But I also know that any of us who realistically said, what's our main goal over the next six months and one year and eighteen months? At least in some priority would be not going broke, getting our staff back and paid and dealing with what are very unflattering types of goals and unflattering types of visions because we are in the middle the roughest spot this city has arguably ever been financially and, and business-wise. So I, I love the idea of, of having an opportunity to, to get off the clock, get off the normal agenda. Yeah, we have to follow the Brown Act, but to be able to discuss things with a little, with, with maybe, maybe one hand not but at the same time.
I can talk to, I can talk to James about it. And it sounds like more and more of you are still saying that this needs to be a management meeting, not a visioning meeting.
Well, I completely disagree. The most important thing is that we have a shared vision and absolutely I, you know, action comes from conversation. And we've got to be able to, to create that as a, as a group. And you're so generous, Jim, with your time and your expertise and I mean, what, as again, once again, it's such a gift. And I, the community wants a vision. They want a clear vision. Where are we going? And at this emergency moment, I agree totally, Ryan, we are. There is the perfect time. The plague came before the rich. So let's make some, let's make some visions about what happens when we come out of this. So we're ready to go and the community can, can see clearly what the vision, right? And, and so, so incredible, so fabulous. And, and it's such an opportunity and we really need to take this. And we will do this. We can do this. So let's do it.
Well, that's great. And so anyway, we, we can start on Saturday with, with bringing together the main purpose of the day or, in the time that we have available and see what we, see what we accomplish. Again, the only thing I would encourage you to though is, is remember the statement, at least I'm saying it's about creating. I've never seen a breakthrough yet. It didn't, before the fact, look like it was either impossible or unreasonable or infeasible. So whatever limitations you have, if all we do is sit around and say, yeah, but we can't do that because, you know, then we're gonna, we're just gonna go around in circles. I think we have to start from, we can't do that now given X, Y, and Z. And if we were committed to something, we need to change that. Or we need to have a breakthrough in that area, or we need to shift, maybe it becomes a, a different kind of of foundation for the council and future councils. I don't know. I have no idea where it's gonna go. All I'm saying is, if, if you look at this as a, a creative session, albeit in public, and it's not a problem solving session, and that you're look, you're looking to invent and create a future that's not already gonna happen. You know, you're not trying to just simply, you know, describe and predict. You're trying to generate and create. And if you can do that, it'll, it'll be a different opening, a different context and a, and a different possibility for the community. Now, in the process of having that conversation, I suspect a lot of other concerns are gonna get, get surfaced. And then, then, then you can deal with those as well.
And I, I guess where I, I'm gonna take some issue with, with Mayor Styx is that if we cannot amongst ourselves define a global shared vision, that doesn't mean that we can't very productively work together. And I don't think that we should be unrealistic in the sense of trying to achieve something that gets in the way of serving this community. In other words, there's lots of ways that we can agree to disagree, but still effectively perform our function as elected officials. And not, I don't think, you know, get caught into spending a lot of time trying to achieve the unachievable at the expense of making the decisions that are needed for effective governance. And that's just something I'm gonna be very sensitive and cognizant of.
I don't disagree with you, Bill. The only thing, the only place I would ask you to reconsider is, as soon as you say it's, this and this is not achievable, you're putting an absolute objective factor around the, whatever you think the constraint is.
I said, might not be.
I, I understand. I'm just saying
I didn't say not, it can be. I said, might not be. And I'm just saying, the, the, I've been through these kinds of things before, Jimmy. You know, I mean, we're, we've all lived long lives and unfortunately, you're, you're, everybody on this council is pretty, had a lot of experiences. And, you know, you, you have to be careful in saying, well, you know, setting a, like, like an ethos of, of achieving a certain type of shared vision in the face of different philosophical approaches to how we look at problems. And if you go down too far into well, we've got to get to that shared vision before we proceed with governance, you're not being responsible towards the people that elected us. That's what I'm trying to say.
I'd like to, because from what I'm hearing, Jim, it's not about, we all have to agree. We have to be, be willing to share our visions with each other. And that's where the alignment comes from. And Jim, how many of you, how many of these have you done? Have, have you worked with government before? I mean, how many thousands?
I, I've never, I've, I've never worked with a political group. I've worked with every, every deputy minister and assistant deputy minister in the government of Canada. You know, in, in five to ten day kinds of contexts. So I've worked a lot in government. I worked for the White House. I've worked for Congress. But, but never for the elected officials, always for the management staff and so forth. So I'm very comfortable in the public sector. And again, I think I, Bill's point is correct, you know, that, that in Councilman Blatz's point is correct. This is a, when bureaucracy was invented by, by Weber, it was the perfect organization for doing routine things. The problem is in the world today, we don't have routine things. There's a whole lot of, everything's, you know, like a, a one-off original. So how you constitute yourselves, how you organize yourselves, how you relate to each other, I believe, and it's by belief, is, is up for examination and design. That you're not forced into some kind of historical lockstep mindset about how bureaucracies have to work.
Yeah.
But, but, but Councilman Blatz's point is, is exactly right. It's a different entity and I have not worked with politicians in this context before.
We're all, we're also constrained legally with a certain structure that we have to operate within. I mean, we can't just go and change state statutes about how, you know, general law cities operate.
That's right. Now I understand.
So I think this is all interesting fodder for Saturday morning. Jim, I'd like you to think of something for me. We're five elected officials and there might be twenty, let's say thirty people that call in on Saturday. How do we create a vision for seventy-five hundred people? I, I really mean that because it seems to me elected, and this is, I imagine this is what Bill's talking to and Ryan's talking to, is you're an elected official and I don't you know, know personally all the people that voted for me. I'm sure none of us do. But the reality for me is, anything that I do, I want it to be in the best interest of this community. And I really resent when a small group of people seem to think that their vision for this community is greater than the community's vision. So the question would be, how do we achieve community vision in what we're trying to achieve versus five people sitting on a council and thirty people that might call in and say, that's the new Ojai vision. And I think that's one of the problems that I run into. And maybe that's just me. But that's one of the problems I run into.
That's true. And remember, the, the thing in my view and my, my work, I would say, you have the power of declaration. As, as, as an entity in the government, as the government, when you speak, it's real because you say it. That's the power of declaration. That's the, one of the primary actions of a leader. And if, that's why I say, if you declare this to be the vision, that is the vision of the community. And there may be people who have different views and different visions and different agendas and all kinds of things, but at least you've, you've put a stake in the ground. But this is the future that we, the leadership, are committed to. And we declare it to be so. And you're, you very likely are always gonna have dissenters. But then that becomes another conversation, which is how do you enroll and engage the centers to be able to, to see what you see? And you, you enroll and, and engage people rather than try to sell and convince.
Well, like you said, that's where the politics come into it. So
Or always be open to learning from others in unexpected ways.
Well, like I said, I look forward to it. I'm glad I was reminded. You know, I'm a pretty busy guy. James called me at eight-thirty before the meeting.
Jim, if I could ask one thing, you and I had talked, maybe the last time we talked about whether it would be a good idea to put kind of a couple of approximate timeframes on the meeting of, you know, you know, spend this much time on visioning versus, or, you know, developing that vision versus this much time developing goals as an example.
No, I'm, I'm committed based, I'm, based on our conversation, I'm committed to try, and again, it's an effort, it's an intention, to have some of the meeting allocation to, to focus on, on defining the space of the vision at least. The opening, the general anchors and some, some, some boundaries there. And then to try to focus on short-term or shorter-term goals, objectives, projects, that if, if we, and we have to be willing to play this in a game, it's a game of mindset. As if, if this is really the reality we've created, how did we do it? What commitment did the council make in 2021? You know, when did we finish the climate park? You know, when was that, when, and see, I'm trying to press the issue of commitment. When specifically did we finish the climate park? What year, what date, what month? What things had to be dealt with and resolved in order to have that be complete? What laws had to be changed if there was one of those, Bill? You know, what, what had to have happened in order for us to fulfill and accomplish, you know, what we were trying to do? And, 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 you know, and you'll end up with an action plan for the climate park or, or whatever other projects you may have. Is, so I'm looking to try to do both of those things, but as, as Bill has so eloquently said, you know, the ambition may be too much. But we won't know that until we have the conversation.
So we put some structure of combining visioning with governance responsibilities somewhat disciplined towards both of those.
That's right. And I think both are equally important.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim.
So, so can we be in agreement that, that alignment, alignment, for, you know, this is our, this is our first golden opportunity to work with Jim. I see it as a golden opportunity to have a conversation of this nature. And, 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 and as I said, when I spoke up at the beginning of meeting or this, this top, this item on the agenda, I don't know how to characterize it. I wanted to go into it with the understanding that if we need more time, either Saturday or another time, that we are willing to commit to that. That's, that's what I, I want to go into it with that kind of a my mind, that on my mind. So there's no, there's no time restriction in reality.
I, I'm not willing to consent to that. It'll be part of the process. I'm not willing to consent to unlimited time. No.
Well, I don't mean unlimited time, but three hours, and, and as I think Randy already pointed out, is, that's an unrealistic. If we can do it in three hours, that would be amazing. But if we need more time, are we willing to make, to commit to more time?
I don't know enough, I don't know enough to make that decision right now.
Susan, I would, I would leave that as a decision in the meeting.
Okay. Right. That's all I'm saying, Susan.
People, if people aren't getting juice from this, it's a waste of time.
Okay, thank you.
I'm already juiced. I can't wait. Thank you so much, Jim. It's gonna be fabulous.
What am I doing?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you so much, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay.
Tomorrow, four o'clock, climate, climate committee.
Number four, SCAG.
Yeah, this, every year we we designate a voting delegate for the SCAG conference. Usually the SCAG conference is held at a location and there's the conference and then the voting. This year, it's going to be done virtually. It's on Thursday, May sixth, 2021 at eleven AM. It'll be a Zoom teleconference. The other strange thing this year, COVID, is they have not released their meeting materials yet or their agenda yet, but they are asking us to designate a, a council member to attend as soon as possible with the request we A council member to attend as soon as possible was the request we received from SCAG. So we wanted to bring it to see if there was, if, if there, if councils ready and willing to designate a, a delegate to attend that meeting on May 6th. So.
I would hope the mayor wanted to.
Well, thank you, Bill.
This is my opinion.
Okay, I don't want to take it from anyone else.
Do you want to do it, Mayor Betsy?
I want to do it if that seems to be the correct decision. Anybody comment?
Well, I would, I would say that I would like for you to do it.
Okay.
Cannot do it, I'm willing to do it.
That's very kind of you, Susan. All right, I'll do it. SCAG, here I come.
Madam Mayor, for this one, we will need a, as a nomination, one, the nomination from Councilmember Francina is sufficient. We'll then need a council vote to confirm.
Okay.
Was that a motion from Councilmember Wirick and a second from Councilmember Francina, or did I get that?
Either way, either way.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
Can, can you guys decide which it is so that I?
Okay, let, let, let councilperson Francina be the nominator. That's fine with me.
Okay, I'll nominate Betsy Sticks and there will.
It doesn't need a second.
Yeah, nominations don't need a second. So nomination from Councilmember Francina is sufficient. That allows a vote and I'll, I'll look to the clerk to take the vote.
Okay, thank you. A vote please, Gail. Mayor Protem Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Haney?
Absolutely.
All right, SCAG, here I come. All right, thank you very much, I guess, I think. All right, number five, the pension. James, I'll take that away.
Thank you. And Gail, if you can let Pam and our, and Dan into the meeting, we'll. We have, we have a guest from Gov Invest that we will be speaking with. I'm going to pull up a quick introduction. This is, on the consent calendar today, we had our budget calendar. Listed, which lays out the schedule for the budget process this year. And we've had a couple of steps, but this really to me is the big kickoff. We have this discussion today and then we'll have a couple of budget workshops. Or a few budget workshops scheduled and coming, coming meetings. As we work up to the June budget process. The budget this year is going to be interesting to say the least. And there's a lot of unknowns at this time, but one of the things we wanted to do from the get-go is. Identify some of these, some major issues and impacts that we should be aware of. And maybe that in the past, we didn't have a clear picture on. We wanted to try to get a clear picture this year. And so in the past, we've talked about potential pension and OPEB liability. Just to, to clarify that for the public. You know, pension liability or, you know, the expected costs for employee pensions. But OPEB is something a lot of people haven't heard. It's other post-employment benefit costs, which is. It's not unusual for agencies or businesses to have other post-employment benefits, which are other benefits that people get at retirement. I think it's, we've talked about it a lot here that the one everybody is aware of is there was a. Post-employment benefit prior to, for employees prior to, hired prior to 2012. October 1st, 2012, where those employees got a health benefit once they retired. That benefit no longer exists, but there's still costs for those employees who got on the plan back then. So part of this report is explaining. The real cost of those benefits that we expect to, to pay essentially. And so I'll quickly give an update. Like I said, this ties into the budget. We have severe budget pressure as is. With the impacts of COVID that we've discussed a few times today. This chart we went through a couple of weeks ago, but it shows how our expenditures have been cut $1.2 million from pre-COVID to June of 2020. And then they got cut another $1.2 million from June 2020 to what we're expecting to, to be at, at the end of this year. This fiscal year, which is June 2021. So a $1 million cut for a city of our size is a huge cut. We've had two in a year due to the COVID pandemic. And at this point, I would say we're probably expecting to stay very conservative and very much. Near that level this coming year. And the reality is, is, you know. That's a challenge for us to keep providing the level of service we currently provide it. But it's also a challenge because there are these other costs and other liabilities that we have to pay off. And so that's where this pension conversation ties into the budget conversation. We've also said this a few times today. This was a chart from a couple of months back that we had provided showing our reserves and where they started prior to COVID. And where we were estimating that they would be. We are here and this estimate that we gave a couple of months ago is pretty accurate. And that's obviously, you know, a huge reduction from where we were. We were in a pretty good spot prior to COVID and as we've said today, we, we were impacted severely. More than I think most other local agencies due to COVID and its unique impacts on our types of businesses. So, so this is a number that we're going to have to try to focus on rebuilding. Once we survive this, this pandemic situation. And so. To that, to that point. We wanted to start talking about some of these big picture issues that we're going to have to start focusing on and incorporating into the budget. I've already hit on most of them in the introduction, but you know, for a city with a $10 million budget, you know. We're essentially going to have to rebuild our reserves with another $5 million at some, you know, over the years. But that's something that we should start planning for now. We're going to have to. Address these pension and OPEB costs at some point, which this report identified that the pension costs. Accrued liability for those pension costs is currently $5 million. The accrued OPEB cost is currently $2.5 million. And the one thing I'll say with these is, as Dan's going to go through. With the investment strategies we've selected, some like the OPEB costs would project to be paid off by 2031. So it's not necessarily that we're going to have to scramble and, you know, find $2.5 million. But it's just something we need to be aware of as we budget and it's something for us to keep in mind and. And consider, you know, where we allocate resources. And then last is, we just know that we're expecting there to be a continued ongoing impact on our revenue. So when you start looking at these numbers for a city with our budget. There are really severe budget pressures on us that we should, we just need to be cognizant of and aware of as we budget this year. In coming months, so. Lastly, I went through this, but pension, I think most people are aware of. It's the payments for a person's retirement. And when a person works for an agency, they make regular payments into an investment fund. And this accrued liability is the difference in the amount that they didn't pay into the fund. And, and that difference that needs to be made up over time. OPEB is, like I said, the other benefits besides the pension that someone's eligible to receive after retirement. So with that. I will turn it over to Dan from Gov Invest, who's worked on this issue for us. And let me stop sharing my screen. Dan, take it away, Dan.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. I am honored to be able to provide this update to you this evening. I've had the unique pleasure of, of working with your staff. And providing this update. They were great to work with. And I do realize this is a dense topic with a lot of pension jargon. So I hope that you will bear with me. We'll try to cover a lot of ground today. So I'd ask that you would hold your questions to, to the end. And. I guess mainly one of the things. You know, well, you know, I want, I want to walk you through a little bit of pension basics. Some of the headwinds that I expect to see coming out of PERS and the capital markets. And then provide you an update of where your pension and OPEB plans exist today. So with, with that, I will get into some of the pension basics. With, with any of these long-term plans, they really depend on a number of economic and demographic assumptions. With investment income being one of the major cost drivers. And you can see there are both employee contributions, employer contributions that come into the plan. But investment income is, is a big, a big part of the affordability and, and the cost of these plans. And so I'm not going to go through each of these definitions, but it's, this is some of the pension jargon that I will, I will leave for you. And hope they will resonate in, you know, the following slides. And so let's kind of get at it. As Mr. Vega indicated. The goal of, of any long-term liability is, is really to fund it through the active service life of the employee. And if all actuarial assumptions and market assumptions were correct. That expect that. The liability would be funded through the expected life of the employee. So in this example, I'm showing a 25-year-old that perhaps works for 30 years to end to 35. And what you can see under ideal circumstances, investment earnings would, would make up roughly two-thirds of. The funds necessary to pay that benefit throughout the term of their, of their, of their retirement until they expired. Unfortunately. If the market value of investments fall short of the expected earnings. Then an unfunded liability is, is created. And the accrued liability is really. The, a funding progress target. And it's easier to, to identify this, you know, for one individual rather than the system as a whole. So at age 45, you can see the blue line represents the target balance that we would have. The market value is the green and the red would represent the unfunded accrued liability. As of a picture point of, of time and hopefully it grows to the target. So that at retirement, there'd be sufficient funds to pay their benefits into retirement without any future contributions. So some of the headwinds that we are facing. Whether it's CalPERS and it's really portfolio managers across the country. Is that during the, the COVID pandemic, we've seen the 10-year treasury. Drop as low as a half a percent down in, in, in August. Now it's made a very abrupt increase since December. And so it's now back to one and a half percent. But when you look at the CalPERS portfolio and this is fairly standard across. Most investment plans. Fixed income would represent at least 30% of that portfolio. So when 30% of the portfolio is earning, you know, one and a half percent. Or at times below 1%, it's pretty hard to imagine a path to 7%. Which is the target rate of return for, for the plan. And so, you know, investment managers at, at PERS realize. You know, in, in order to hit that 7% target rate of return. That equities and private equity would have to earn, you know, double digits. So they're faced with that unpleasant dilemma of taking on more risk in order to achieve that target rate of return. Or perhaps lower that discount rate. And you have to be careful what you ask for because when you lower the assumed rate of return, of investment return. Then the city by, by default. Picks up the, the difference under defined benefit plan. So talking about some of those headwinds. You know, we're still paying off some of the losses that were incurred. During the Great Recession. And when I say losses, they're experienced losses where the earnings slipped below 7%. So in 2019, we know they missed the target by three tenths of a percent. And for Ojai, that amounted to 72,500. And for the 2020 investment experience loss, which isn't in your current valve. But it's something that we have in, 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 in the software suite to be able to predict for Ojai. That loss was closer. The 2020 loss is an additional 356,000 that CalPERS missed the target. But even more concerning to me are the capital market assumptions looking forward. Willshire, which is CalPERS, both CalPERS Investment Advisory as well as Investment Advisors, well as most major. Retirement plans across the country are predicting in the next 10 years. You know, largely because of the low investment fixed income environment. That they're expecting. Returns in the five and a half percent range and the 30-year return to be, you know, still below the 7% target. So to me, that is a very early indicator that there will be future discount rate reductions in the fall of 21. Which will inevitably increase the cost of this, this benefit to, to, to the city. So when we look at the OPI, Ojai update, the unfunded. So you have, you know, the accrued liabilities 20 million. You, you have assets set aside with PERS. And an unfunded accrued liability of 5.5 and, and slightly different than the OPEB plan. The, the pension plan, it's statutorily required to make contributions to that plan. So CalPERS will determine what your, what, what the cost you will need to cover. The current operating cost for the year. And that, that means the, what, what individuals will accrue your current workforce. Plus a methodology to, to amortize the unfunded accrued liability. Over a period not to exceed 20 years. And you can see you're kind of in that almost, you know, 18-year range by the time you had. If all future actuarial assumptions were met, you would have that UAL or unfunded accrued liability paid off in, in about 18 years. And well, you know, we, we're all skeptical whether that is possible. So we've modeled your funded status in a couple of different ways. We've assumed the worst case scenario that on average CalPERS earns 5%. We've modeled at 6% and if they hit their, their return. You would be fully funded in 2020, 38, absent. Experienced difference differing from actuarial assumptions and. And, you know, if things are worse, well, if they don't hit that return. Your funded status really isn't dropping all that much. You're kind of holding your own. You're, you're holding your own through that period. And so you're, you're not losing much ground. And that's largely because you're, in the next 15 years, you'll be paying off so much principal and, and during that time. So your costs under those same scenarios look, you know, like, like this. So the green line, you could see is pretty flat compared to most agencies and it tapers off. Compared to most agencies and it tapers off. In 2037 or, you know, you start really seeing that precipitous decline starting in 15 years. So most of that pain is in that, is in the next 15 years, but you notice that the cost increase. Is fairly stable on the, on the UAL repayment. And that's where most of the volatility typically comes into. With most plans. And I will tell you, I see the, the shape of. The payment plans. Every day, all day long, and I can say the average. Trajectory of local agency costs look more like this. Where it is, they're moving up a steep mound before it starts declining again. And fortunately, your staff has managed that very well. And your cost curve, they've already bent the cost curve. So it's relatively flat, as I mentioned before. Now with the CalPERS, you know, with the, the. Capital market assumptions. Being. A, a bit on the, on. The skeptical, you know, we're, I think we're all a little bit skeptical whether they will hit that target rate of return. This is a hypothetical, this is where your cost curve is heading today, which is sloping downward. But if they had three years of additional performance, underperformance at the five and a half percent, you could see that it would start creeping back. Up. So that's where your, your, your pension plan is today. On the OPEB side, you can see. Mr. Vega mentioned that your unfunded liability is currently at 2.81 million. With a funded status of 17 and a half percent. That was. And, and your annual cost to service that unfunded liability. As well as keeping up on the, on the, the, the normal cost or the service cost for, for the current period. It's about 374. I think it needs to be nudged up just a bit to closer to, to, to four, 400,000. But you can see you realize some positive experience between the two years. Where your unfunded liability dropped nearly a million dollars. And that really has to do with mostly with. Positive plan experience. The actuary noted that. Your active employees are, are down roughly. Oh. I, I believe it's almost, almost 18 employees. In, in, since the last evaluation. So that was part of it. The other is some of the healthcare trend rates were. Had some actual positive experience that led to that almost $1 million reduction in the unfunded liability. The actual, so the actual determined contribution is made up of two components. It's made up of. Typically the cost of this current service period plus. Repaying your liability over, repaying the unfunded liability over a closed. Used to be a 20-year. Amortization and you're, you're down to about 18 years left in that. It, in, in that, that payment progress. So. Your, your current. Benefits are, you're paying, you know, a significant amount of, for employees that are already receiving the benefit. And that additional contribution can be viewed. Really as. As part is partially pre-funding of the, the current employees as well as paying down your unfunded liability. I would like to see that sort of flip flop a bit where we would show the amortization of the unfunded liability. Closer to, to, to 300,000. And that your service cost is about a, a hundred thousand. That is a little bit in the weeds, but. The, the, the way the fundy, the city's funding policy had evolved over time. It was paying the current benefits plus 100,000 to pay down the unfunded liability. I think a little less, a little bit more traditional approach would be to take your unfunded liability, amortize it over a period that you, you, you are looking for. You know, 15 to 20 years and then cover your, your service cost. So you end up really in the same place. It's about, you know, it's in the high 300s. To, to, to. Close, close to four, 400,000. So the next time we, we do a valuation, I would suggest. Slightly retooling how this is calculated. Because I, I, I do think at the time that the amount deposited in trust, this is that 100,000 that's deposited in the trust. Might be viewed as. Well, it, it, it really is. Closer to, to, to 300,000 and that your service cost for your current employees is about 100,000. Right now it's flip flop. This is what, what you're paying in benefits. And so that's just, it's, it's really all a semantics. But you get to the same place where your total contributions are really kind of in that. Between 375 to about $400,000 in, in annual contribution to pay both your. Current cost as well as paying down your unfunded liability. So. At the current discount rate of, of 7.55% on your OPEB plan, you could see under different scenarios. Your current contribution towards, towards your trust is 100,000 and that would get you paid off. In that 17 and a half to 18 years as well, kind of in sync with your pension program. So despite how you came up with the funding program, it's still tracking the way it should be. And. But you know, if the city were to consider. Trying to accelerate the repayment you made. If you got that payment up to, you know, closer to 500,000, then you would, you would pay it off. Shorter. And if you discontinued your, your, your contribution in that $100,000 contribution in, into the trust. Where, where we would extend out, you know, beyond, beyond the projection period. Out here. And. The next question that really came up is. You know, what, what if we went to a more conservative investment strategy? And currently you're in, in, in CERP Strategy 1, which has an expected return of between six and a half to 7%. And if you were to, to start. Bringing that to a more conservative strategy, which sounds nice on the, on the surface, but will really increase your liability. And your costs, because it would otherwise be assumed that those investment earnings were coming from. Were, were coming from investment earnings. And instead, if you recall. If you lower the discount rate or the assumed rate of return, the city would have to make up that difference. So not only would it. That liability would increase beyond, if you went to CERP Strategy 3, which is the most conservative. Which represents about 70% fixed income. Then your liability would increase because there's less investment earnings being assumed paid into the program. And that additional conservatism doesn't necessarily pay off for, for. For OHI, given that the liabilities, the investment horizon for those, those liabilities are still in that, that. 18-year range. So. Moving to fixed income, we've talked about, you know, the 10-year being, being hitting almost half a percent in August. And now it's up to close today at 1.55% that. That. You know, moving to a 70% fixed income strategy would make. It's. It, it, it would increase the hurdle for, for OHI. And with that long investment. Horizon. Wouldn't really. Change the volatility too much until you get below. 15, below 10 years, then you might think about reining in and going to a more conservative strategy. But given that you're 18 years out. Seems more appropriate to stay in this more aggressive strategy. And that volatility that you might expect with a more. Aggressive strategy abates over time. The longer investment horizon is the. The less volatility that you would expect in your, in, 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 in an equities-based strategy. So that is the end of my, my, my presentation. I'm sure. The council may have some very good questions for James and myself. So we'll open it up to questions at this point unless James has any comments that he would like to make at this point.
Yeah, I think I'll just say one more thing, which is, you know, we had really two goals with bringing this to council. One is to really give everybody a clear picture of what. What our liability currently looks at and is projected to be. And second was initially, we had brought this to the budget committee to talk about potential changes this year. I think what we've seen going through all of this is there's, there's really two potential. Things that you, that we can adjust that would change the timeline for paying off this liability. One is which investment strategy we choose. So the current one, investment strategy, one is the one that is projected to pay off this liability much sooner than the other strategies. Second would be to just pay more into the trust fund. But the reality is, you know, and, and I'm going to, you know, Pam and I will be the two bringing this to council. The reality is with this year's budget and what we're looking at, this is not going to be a year that we'll, we're, we're going to expect to recommend. Making a big increase to what we pay. It's just, it's just not going to be feasible this year. So something for us to think about. I think. One of the charts that Dan showed, showed like what would happen if we did modify how much we pay. You know, something if we, yeah, slide 20 exactly. Yeah. And it's, you know, if, if we recover well in the next year or two, then this is something we probably would want to talk, revisit and talk about. I think this is one I, I will save. And have handy for budget discussions in coming years. But the reality is, like I said, two op, two options right now is invest in the more aggressive strategy or pay more. And so we had originally gone to budget committee and said, we were going to look at these strategies closely. Pam and I, at the end of doing so with Dan, recommend staying in the investment strategy, one that we're in. And then just like, like I said, keeping this in the back of our minds and, or the front of our minds actually as we budget. And, and make some of those tough decisions in the next, this year, but also in coming years. So. With that, if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them.
James, what's the current interest we're paying on this debt?
I'm sorry, what was that?
What's the current interest that we're paying on this debt?
So James, if I could jump in on, on, on the OPEB, you're, you're currently paying seven and a half, 7.55%. And on PERS, you're paying 7%.
So with, so these are just questions, trust me, by no means am I. A genius at any of this. But if money's cheaper. If money's cheap right now, because of interest rates being low. Would it be cheaper to take a loan out and pay this off at a cheaper interest rate? Or are we carrying this interest? Do we get this interest rate for seven or 18 years? Versus if we took a loan out, let's say it's a seven-year loan and you got it at 4% or 3%. You'd still be, you'd be paying more. You, you understand what I'm saying? Am I?
I do. James, do you want me to take that question or do you want to handle it?
Sure. Yes.
So, so. While, so while the debt that you would borrow is a fixed, fixed interest rate. The rates both on your OPEB and your pension plan are the assumed earnings rate. So if they don't come into fruition, so you could borrow, let's say at. Three or, or potentially even four, you could, you could think of it. As, hey, we would have this arbitrage savings between those two different, between those two. But if PERS or the CERP trust earns. Less than, than, than your borrowing rate, then you're underwater on that plan. So it is something that we can look at with your investment advisor to see if you, you're interested in either doing a private placement or. Some other restructuring of your liability. But we would have to then also. So you're walking into this decision eyes wide open. That we're looking at what could go wrong. And so we would do some stress testing to say. Well, what if we, right after borrowing that money and investing it, we had something like. You know, the dot-com recession, the great recession, or perhaps just a straight line estimate of, of, of PERS actuaries. Assuming you're only going to earn five and a half percent on average for the next 10 years. So we can. We can, i- i- if it's something that the council is interested in, we can do some initial. Pension restructuring. Education sessions, but. This is something that. The council would want to look at closely and move into such a transaction with their eyes wide open, clearly understanding the risks. Because. The debt that you would take on with that, either the private party or the capital markets is fixed. And the rate that CalPERS earns is less, you know, less clear. And we know that there on any individual year, they, there can be significant amount of volatility that might wipe out. That. That presumed. Interest savings, but it's an excellent question. It's very popular these days. But. Council would have to go into it with, with their eyes wide open and understand the risks. And we would. We would, we would proceed with a very deliberate process if that is something that the council wishes to entertain.
Well, to me, it was just a question. I'm, I'm interested to see what Dr. Wierich has to say.
Well. May I, may I proceed? Randy, you know, I, I think you asked a very valid question, but I would call it. You know, in terms of risk management, it's kind of going to the boundary condition, you know, of refinancing the whole thing. And if I'm perceiving this right. You know, one of the things that. Put us into a better position, I think Dan would, would agree was when we. We set up that 100,000 per year beginning in 15, at least it put us in a better position now than we would have been.
For sure. Yes.
And in, in retrospect, I mean, I remember, you know, I was on council then and I. Remember discussing this and I felt bad when we had to suspend that 100,000 this year, but we really didn't have any choice. But what I guess I'm trying to. But what I guess I'm trying to point out is that there's sort of a maybe an intermediate approach to this, Randy. That's interested to see how Dan thinks about this is, as our revenues recover, and we may not be looking, we may have to be looking at, you know, not this current fiscal year, well, may we, I don't know, maybe we'll have to wait till twenty twenty two. But there's certainly significant reduced risk if we can pay down more quickly. But you have to be, you have to look at your liquidity constraints. And what I'm thinking is that, and see if Dan or James, you think that or Pam, this makes any sense at all, that if we can set up a line of credit, that would allow us to avoid the problem Dan's talking about, but maybe a little more aggressively paying down in future budget years, where we we kind of have a little liquidity backstop if we get it wrong by a little bit in a given year. Sort of us accomplishing the same thing that Randy's talking about without taking on as much risk as refinancing the whole thing. Does that make any sense, James or Dan or Pam?
Yeah, are you thinking like, maybe doing that to increase those yearly pay, those yearly payments of the trust fund?
Right, in other words, if we had the line and credit in place, let's say for three million.
Yes.
And we budget two hundred thousand or even three hundred thousand, and we fall short of the T O T for some reason.
Yeah.
We're not completely, you know, we're not a- a- at the exposure level that complete refinancing would would put us in.
Yeah.
We're still paying down.
Yeah, and you know, the nice thing about that is with the trust fund is that if we really got into a bind, we could potentially use that to pay the annual contributions at some point, too.
Because we are looking at a spread of about three hundred basis points. But you you're Dan's right, you can't lock into the long term future, but at least it would give us a little bit of a liquidity management tool to be more aggressive on the pay down. I don't know if I'm making any sense.
Yeah, you're you're absolutely making sense. And in fact, many agencies aren't choosing, those that are choosing to either go to the capital markets or go to a go go to a line of credit or a private placement. Not all of them are assuming extinguishing the entire debt, there may be just chipping away at it.
Right, just chip away a little faster with that.
And and then you spread your risk that way, too. Now, we are, we are not series fifty registered municipal advisors. So that would be your F A or M A that we would want to work with on the table before we start trying to sell you a miss a municipal security. But we could certainly, if you have a municipal advisor, great, we'll work with them, we work collaboratively with them, we do not compete with them. If not, we can suggest one or two that are are doing this, and we can investigate and give you a couple of different scenarios, whether it's a line of credit or a small private placement with a bank to keep the, you know. And, yeah, we we are happy to look at those those opportunities.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to go back real quick to to something Councilmember Wire said that I want to reiterate, too, is this, the the news here is it's mixed in a lot of ways, you know, it's obviously the the potential outstanding liability is 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 not a small amount, but the positive that you alluded to. We've made these hundred thousand dollar deposits into the trust fund that have added up to, I think our most recent estimate was seven hundred and twenty two thousand dollars, which is a big, big chunk, and that's something that last I had heard, we were the only city in the county that was doing that that extra payment. And then the other thing is, you know, the making that adjustment in twenty twelve where we ended that benefit, if we had continued that benefit, these costs would be astronomical. So obviously, as an employee, that benefit sounds great, but as far as the cost, it's 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 hard to justify.
Thank you, thank goodness that decision was in twenty made in twenty twelve, absolutely. And then we committed in twenty fifteen.
Yeah, exactly.
Mayor?
Yeah, Randy.
And I asked you about, you know, so you have interest on debt that you're carrying out for the eighteen years. And then we're not fixed at seven percent in our strategy one, correct?
Correct.
That interest rate could go up or could go down, am I correct?
Correct.
So obviously, if it goes up in and so you're so you're creating more fun, would you earmark any increases to to service debt? I I mean, is there a is is that what happens automatically, or is that something that you have to predetermine in your strategy session or section?
So that that is an excellent question. If you were to issue what's called pension obligation bonds, sorry, so are we talking OPEB or or pension?
I think, Dan, I think what Randy, Councilmember Randy's asking is if if it overperforms, you know, what happens to that money? And I think the answer, but correct me if I'm wrong, is that it, you know, it you that whatever overperforms, that also starts paying off that liability.
It does, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, it 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 does. And I just wanted to make clear that you couldn't use that those excess earnings for anything other than
Right.
Now, you could always say, well, you know, we're not going to make a contribution, you are a normal contribution and draw down your trust if, you know, to make your 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 service cost payments. So, I mean, nobody's too worried about being overfunded at at this stage. But there's certainly, instead of taking, making your contribution out of the general coffers of the city, you can make that payment out of your trust. And I'm not suggesting that, because I think the plan that you have, which is set aside the amount that you don't need for cash flows and 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 have it invested for the long term is a very good strategy. Now, whether you want to accelerate that through, you know, some restructuring or some additional borrowing is is slightly a different different topic. But we're we're happy, you know, happy to look into that with with a financial advisor, whether it's one of yours or whether it's somebody that we bring on. And, yeah, there there there's certainly that that opportunity of accelerating that through through the issuance of debt at a fairly low rate.
The other question is, is is a PERS, the investment agency. We're not, we don't have our own investment agency, where you were relying on someone else.
Correct. That's that's correct, so most agencies are, so the the trust providers out there usually give you one of three to five options. There is one provider that would provide, that would allow you to customize your strategy. But these are the most common strategies, you know, sixty forty per, you know, portfolio. And there there are fact sheets on each one of these strategies that would give you the, you know, allocation between fixed assets and and equities. But given the long term horizon that you have, while I'm not a registered investment advisor, the long term, the long term horizon makes it conducive and appropriate for an aggressive investment strategy, assuming that is suitable to your company, to your to your your community. And sixty forty, I mean, it's kind of like your retirement, you know, so if when you're in your twenties, you might not have any bonds. So you might be all equities. But the closer you get to a mature plan where you need to make cash outflows, then you're going to need to start adjusting that mix to sixty forty. You know, now all of a sudden, you're inside five years, you might be seventy percent fixed income and equities, so.
Well, I understand all of this fluctuates, I was just wondering, you know, over the last five years, we've seen nothing but the stock market go up. Now, I'm I'm sure on the caution, on the other side of that is, whatever goes up has to come down. So and I understand, and I would, I would assume that everything that our investment entities are doing to have the word safe somewhere in the middle of it or near it or around it, you know, that, you know, because I'm sure all of us or I'll speak for myself, like, you know, I have a number of friends that are, their return is greater than seven percent right now in all of their investments. So I was just wondering how that works and is that, I'm sure that gets a lot of cities in trouble when they start playing that game, but.
Well, well, certainly, and I'm sure some of your your, I mean, some of the portfolios, if you if you're looking at a portfolio that was a hundred percent equities, it's not a fair comparison. So this is, you know, I I would say these are are moderate, moderately aggressive options being being search strategy one. There are folks that offer strategies that are even more aggressive, where they're seventy percent equities. And a part of the problem that I have with moving to fixed income or, you know, to moving the opposite way to say seventy percent fixed income is with interest rates as low as they are. So with fixed income, you'd say, well, you know, equities are expensive. When the when the yield on a fixed income instrument is low, that means the cost of that fixed income instrument is actually expensive because the lower the yield, the higher or the lower the market is, the the higher you would have, you would expect to pay for an investment that is that is earning a higher rate of return. And so, for example, if you're if if you're holding, if somebody's holding a five percent investment and you're holding one at one, in order for that, for for somebody to say, well, if I can buy a five percent investment, I'm going to have to buy, I'd have to buy your one and a half percent at a discount. So starting out at the at at this compressed level, I would anticipate many fixed income portfolios on a total return basis to probably turn negative for perhaps the next year or so. So that was part of the cautionary tale. And in your safety net on being in 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 investments is that you've got a long time horizon. So that volatility, as I said, abates over time.
Right, that's right, I I hear you. Okay. So, James, what do you need from us?
So, you know, ultimately, we don't really need, the the staff report says the recommendation is to direct staff to remain in OPEB investment strategy one. The reason we wrote it that way was because we had originally initiated this with the intention that we were going to try to change strategies. And then after doing all this work and research, decided we shouldn't try to train change strategies. So we really don't need any direction unless somebody, unless the consensus is to change it. Otherwise, we can just receive the report and and move on, so.
All right, thank you, James, that was a great report.
Thank you. Numbers, numbers, numbers.
Yeah, thanks, Dan, and thanks, Pam, for all the the work on it, so.
Yeah, thank you, much, thanks, Dan.
Pam was great to work with, so was James.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, all right, well, thank you. Moving right along to drones, okay, this is number six, Bill and Souza.
Want me to go ahead, or you want to go ahead?
Dan, can you stop sharing your?
Oh, thank you. I almost left the meeting and left it up there for you.
Please come back anytime.
All right, anytime, happy to.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a nice evening, everyone.
Susan, do you want me to introduce this, or you want to?
Yes, no, you go ahead, please.
The reason we're introducing this is that we both were drawn to the fact that the FAA is approving regulations rapidly bringing this to a possible reality in communities around the country, as well as the fact that the big Amazon construction center down there at the corner of Rice Road and one on one is going to have a drone roof facility, a drone launching facility. And I don't want to have drone delivery. Oh, and then also Santa Monica is has been beta testing walking drones for delivery, not just air drones. And I don't want this, I think we need to, I, to me, this is in the tradition of being against the formula business approach. You know, built into, we talk about vision, talking about the vision of supporting local, community based retail and trying to lean against industrial retail. And I don't want to have an Amazon drone putting more pressure on local retailers, you know, bringing things in dropping them on into our neighborhoods, which is ve- very close to happening around this country. I think there's privacy issues, there's just quality of life issues, there's threats to our, you know, the wildlife, especially bird life that we really value highly here. And I think it's just a way of continuing to favor by policy as much as we can local retail. I frankly ask everybody in the, you know, I've been thinking of writing something up on this line of, you know, if you have to pay a little bit more, get it locally, even if you have to pay more. You know, less cardboard, fewer miles traveled, maybe walk or ride your bike instead of, you know, having the trucks deliver stuff to your neighborhood and filling up your, have you noticed how often the blue recycling things are full of cardboard these days from pandemic living? And I understand it, but it it really struck me, two Saturdays ago, I had to leave town. I passed seven Amazon Prime delivery vans coming up from, you know, on the, you know, up from the Ventura area on the way down to the thirty three. And I just, this is just something I don't want to have in our community, and I would like us to get ahead of it and regulate it so we don't have it, that's my feeling. Suzie, I don't know if you wanted to add anything?
No, that's, I I feel that way, I I I'm I'm not clear on on the extent of what we can do. And I am concerned about the effect on birds, I was reading about that this afternoon. There's a lot more information coming out about, I mean, it only makes sense, you know. And it's and it's still hard for me to envision how it works, because they're they don't have, the the drones don't land, they drop the small packages, I I I'm not quite sure how even how it works, but it doesn't sound like anything I would want polluting my neighborhood, you know, disturbing the peace and quiet even more.
And I did, and I just, you know, I just think it's, it's only, it's only something that a very large industrial retail organization can do, you know, Amazon is killing local retail all over this country in the same way when I was in the in the South for decades. I saw Walmart killing downtowns all over the South. And then Walmart would close outside of town, and you'd have a, you'd have blight outside of town as well as the blight the Walmart caused in town. You know, main streets were killed everywhere. The worst part of it was some areas were giving discount rated bonds to Walmart to kill their towns off, it was just crazy. And I think we have a tradition of doing otherwise here. And that's why Susan and I agreed to put this and see if there's a majority of council wants to develop a possible regulation.
I I just have a question, here, Betsy, may I? I I don't know if this is a, if it's a priority, because I have some other things I'd rather see on the agenda if if James is has time constraints, so I'd like to be clear whether it matters, whether whether we bring this back next month or May, if that is, is that an an issue, Matt, do you know?
I I was going to suggest, I think the ordinance would be drafted, I think, by the city attorney, but he can tell me otherwise.
Yeah, we drafted, for sure.
Yeah, so as far as, I think a couple of questions I have along those lines, too, is have have you draft, has you or your firm drafted anything on this, or is there a timeline to do that?
you or your firm drafted anything on this, or is there a timeline to do that, or do we have the information to do that at this point? And then, you know, and then, yeah, work, you know, workload or timing wise, so.
We can meet the council's needs or desires as to workload and to timing. We will, we will meet your obligations and your needs there. As to prior familiarity, I've drafted a drone regulation and permitting ordinance or another city that'll, that created a permit scheme for drone, people, people flying drones. They did not ban drones. But the ba- the, the underlying research is sort of the same. So we have some information available that we can start not from zero with. As to timing, I would defer back to the council. We will meet your, your need as maybe desire.
Do you have an idea, Matt, of when this is gonna become, uh, when the rules will change, where this will actually be potentially allowed? You know, is, is there a date that we should try to prepare for or aim for?
That's a bit of an open question. When will the feds act to, there's, there's two things we have to be aware of. One is the feds might preempt our ability to do any of it. And if that's the case, then so be it. Two, and we can, well, I should say so be it, but we can also advocate with our members of Congress against it, mindful, of course, where the power lies on this situation. Two would be, does the state seek to preempt our power as a city on this issue? There's no bills currently, currently pending in the legislature, although there are opportunities for the legislature to add new bills, uh, through May, June on this issue, if there's a desire for that. Um, I'm not hearing a groundswell in Sacramento that that's something that the state's intending to regulate at this time. They're distracted with or focusing on other issues as, as perhaps as obvious. The short answer to the timing question would be if we have something in place within three or four months, that would be likely, but not guaranteed to be ahead of the feds. Uh, and we could certainly bring something back, uh, in April or May for council consideration.
May would be fine with me, huh?
Yeah, yeah, me too, because I wanna bring something else back in April, but, you know. Okay, how does the rest of the council feel?
Sounds good to me. Right. Yep.
Did Ryan have, did Ryan wanna speak? Well, you know, I, I find this interesting. I just can't vision what you people vision, so it's, I, I struggle with this, but. So you have devices that are gonna reduce the carbon footprint into the valley. Um, and we don't want them. So that's the first thing that comes to mind. The second thing is if, what if they came into, what, what if, uh, Amazon went into Oakview and did a, uh, a substation and then flew with drones from there into Ojai? Um, I, like I said, I, I'm not visioning what you guys are visioning. So I struggle with it because I haven't seen a ton of drones in Ojai. And I just don't know how a fleet of drones would work, um, coming from Oxnard. I mean, close your eyes and just envision a drone with a box and maybe a hundred drones and a hundred boxes going up the thirty-three corridor. I just, I, seriously, you guys, I'm laughing at myself. We're trying to envision that. I, I don't, um, understand the importance. I don't know what we're trying to get ahead of. I haven't heard of anything nationally, locally, or anywhere that says this is gonna happen.
No, it's happening. It's happening.
It is hap- it is happening.
You know, and, and, and then the other part of it is you're, um, which I agree with is buying local and supporting local, but, um, you're talking, you're, you're talking about capitalism. And you can't enact rules that tell people not to buy an Amazon. So you're
I didn't say that.
You're gonna get something from Amazon one way or the other. So I, I personally
I'm not. I've stopped buying from Amazon.
You are not interrupting you. Um, I would personally want to see more information and more science and a better understanding of this rather than some rush to something that we don't know about. That's my take on it. So I'm not gonna support any type of writing of any ordinance until I get more facts and more information about it. So it's not that I'm against it or I'm for it. I want more information. So.
So we'll look towards May or so to investigate that?
Be a draft in May.
And bring back the, like a draft ordinance and some analysis of pros and cons?
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Why don't we have the analysis before we waste the time writing an ordinance?
That's an option, if, yeah, council's choice.
Or why don't we wait to see whether we're preempted from the rules before we start writing our own rules, which seems like we're putting the cart in front of the horse on an issue that may help our community with rules that we don't even know yet, what they might even say, just as we don't like Amazon, which is clearly ubiquitous part of life moving forward. And the drone infrastructure, I, I mean, they already use USPS. They already are driving their trucks all around town. The number one thing we can do is get, if we wanna help climate change, the number one thing we could do, and even Lindsey Graham said this on Axios last weekend, was to change the vehicle fleet. And this, imagine if Ojai has a rule that you can't drop off in a drone in Ojai, but you can anywhere in the unincorporated area of the county. So do we just wanna literally make the cost of living go up for the people in our community again?
We have an anti-formula business ordinance just in the side of the city.
What the hell are you talking about? We don't have an anti you can order from any business online you want. They, they deliver to your house in Ojai. How is that different than, how, how does that have anything to do with the formula business ordinance? What am I missing?
It's allowing industrial retail to make further inroads into our
And they can't drive a truck in Ojai.
That's been preempted by the feds.
Oh, that's right. Just like the drone thing will be once it gets approved by the FAA. So let's, let's focus on all the things that are a complete waste of our current time over an issue that there is nothing that anybody is really talking about this on, on something that undoubtedly will come down that's preempted through the feds and the state before it ever gets here. To an issue that even if we could stop, it wouldn't stop your neighbor across the street outside the city limits from changing, where we will have more than ample opportunity to be able to stop it in real time if we have that option like 5G, like everything else that is federally preempted that we do everything we can to push back on. What is the difference about this particular issue, except that it actually has a positive reinforcement in the fact it could get cars that burn fossil fuels off the road in a much more prevalent fashion than any other
The problem we're having here is, if I could say, we're debating the issue and all we're asking for is whether we wanna bring it up for the agenda for debate.
I heard you asking who's gonna write the, who's gonna write it, how much of this gonna cost? I just heard Matt say
Okay, and that's, that's a matter of majority decide whether or not we wanna bring it up to the agenda or not. That's it.
Suzie then Randy.
My understanding is that it doesn't necessarily reduce the number of, of cars, uh, Amazon trucks because it's only for the light packages. The heavier packages will still be delivered by the Amazon trucks. So it won't, it won't, uh, you know, reduce
Where, where though? Where is that? And, and by the way, why would, if, if Amazon has a physical vehicle in your neighborhood that can deliver the package, why would they go to the effort of trying to figure out how to get a drone to do it if it wasn't going?
All, all I know is that they're working on drone deliveries. If you go to, on the internet, there's tons of information, there's videos on how it's gonna work. And my concern is not just the economics, but I don't like what it, what it could do to the bird population. And if I can do something to reduce the number of drones coming through the valley, I wanna do it. And, but I did make clear that I don't want it to take away from, if there's other priorities, you know, I just wanna make sure time-wise that we do it right.
First of all, you're not gonna stop it from coming into the valley. You might stop it coming into city limits, but aside from that, I just wanted to, to bring up, I was watching on YouTube a week or so ago. And they had this mini drone that must've had eight little motors on it and some guys on it, and he's up, you know, above the treetops. And all's I could envision is one of those, one of those motors going out and, uh, I, I, yeah. Like I said, I need more information, you guys. I, I'm not saying you're worry words or whatever you are. You know, I, when I hear of birds, I think of wind turbines. I, um, you know, you can have it both ways here, but, um, I'm willing to have a discussion. I just want information. I don't think it's fair that we're, we're gonna throw something on the agenda and then, then tell staff to go write an ordinance um, without, one, educating ourselves, without having to go to the internet, and two, educating the public and hearing from the public. Do we have any public comments on this?
Yes, we have an excellent public comment on this.
No, how many?
And we had one written comment.
There's one.
We have one comment, one comment, um, that the drones might be taking over. So please, guys, come on, let's get real here. Yeah, it's, you know, America of a Highway is not even on the agenda. How many public comments we got on America of a Highway tonight?
Six.
Uh, moving forward on the drone.
I just want. Excuse me, Matt, excuse me, man.
Can we get some, uh, a recommendation from James and Matt moving forward on this, just, um?
Yeah, I recommend they don't waste their time on it. That's my recommendation.
All right, well, I'm gonna make a motion and let's have a vote that we put it on the agenda in May for a, a genized consideration.
Is that just, uh, the analysis or an, an analysis and an ordinance?
I'd, I'd, I'd like to see a, a draft ordinance and analysis on, make a move that we do that in, uh, some, one of the meetings in April. See if there's a second, we have a vote.
In May, in May.
In May.
I'll second. With Matt, if Matt raises his hand.
No, I was just saying, I understood the motion to be that something comes back to you in, in one of the meetings in May with the draft, obviously, subject to
And analysis.
Consideration.
Yeah.
All right, but Gail.
Can I, uh, ask for an amendment? If, if, if anything comes up in May that is more urgent than this and we can't, you can't do it, June is fine too. Can we say that? So that
Yes, absolutely.
I don't want this to take away from anything that's, you know, has the greater priority.
Amendment to the motion accepted.
All right, Gail, may we have the vote, please?
Councilmember Haney?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
No.
Mayor Sticks?
No.
Mayor Protem Wyrick?
Yes.
Okay.
May, may I say something, uh, Mayor Sticks? Um, you know, when something like this is on the agenda, that if you're not familiar with it, I do expect my colleagues to do their own research, you know, before the meeting. I, I, that's my expectation.
Point of order, I really don't believe we need to be lectured by a fellow council person.
Well.
On the record, it said I did a bunch of research on it.
No, but I, I'm not fine, because it's, it's a constant theme here that
They always says that when they agree with you.
Well.
No.
Let's just all be respectful. We've had a vote, it's done.
And, and we can always bring it back, right?
Yes.
Please bring it back. And, and it's, and, you know, in terms of visioning, this is part of our future, so let's, let's observe what's happening and make the right decisions.
I heard you might be
Well, it's, it's a worldwide issue, so let's, let's see what's happening, right?
Yeah.
Correct? Yeah.
I like when we vote, we make a decision, we move on.
Okay. Okay.
We'll continue to monitor activity at the state and federal law as part of our standard, keeping you apprised of legal developments. And if something does develop, we'll keep you informed.
I'd like to hear.
Excellent. Okay, all right. Well, so then we're moving right along to council member reports. Anybody?
I had a air pollution control district meeting today. Um, I wrote to James afterward. I got a really good PowerPoint in fact, between talking to you earlier, James, and, uh, uh, the meeting this evening, blocking it off with a sense of the up. At the end of March is when a lot of the incentive programs that go through APCD come up. So I'm hoping that, um, I guess it's kind of a future agenda item, but it was also a report, so I apologize, but, uh, I'd like to, um, either myself or have somebody from APCD come in, do a short presentation, but a great presentation today. I've been asking, here, I've been asking, um, the board staff to continue to re-educate everybody on our board about all the incentive programs, when they're available, what they cover, who to contact and all that stuff. And we had a great quick summary of it today, so I'm hoping to bring that back.
Great, thanks, Ryan. Anybody else? Bill?
A couple of things. One on the, in terms of our representation on the Ventura Regional Sanitation District. It's become a, quite an issue, um, involving, uh, hopefully what is gonna be next week will be approval of the conditional use permit to allow the publicly operated landfill to continue to operate in competition with the Waste Management private landfill in East County. There's a bit of a struggle going on where, um, publicly waste management is, is, uh, made some representations. Uh, there's also, it's, it's shown up in some editorial, I think very misplaced editorial, statements of, of air in the Ventura County Star recently by, um, a particular editorial. But I just wanna say that at, at least the way I'm representing the situation is that it's important not to allow a private monopoly to, uh, be able to control, uh, all of the solid waste uh, in the, um, in the county. It's important to have a public alternative to the private. That's in the best interest of the county as a whole. And, uh, just letting you know, that's the, the, uh, especially since the, the facts are, it's at, it's at competitive rates with the private sector alternative. And, um, around the country, uh, when you get monopolies, uh, controlling, um, all of the solid waste disposal, you, you tend to get rapidly uh, escalating rates that are not in the public interest. And you also do not get some of the wider public policy considerations that are important to transitioning to more sustainable handling of waste, uh, overall. So that's how I'm, that's how I'm representing the city in this matter. And just wanted to let everybody know that, that the critical part of that is for the county supervisors to uh, vote to, uh, extend the conditional use permit over the life of the existing, so the, the existing landfill can, can continue to serve the public interest. So I just wanted to state that for the record and see if there are any questions I could, I could answer from the, you know, my colleagues about it. And the other, the other thing is, is that, uh, I've, I've been paying very close attention to what's going on, uh, and just say, state publicly for everyone to know in terms of the in-stream flow, uh, analysis that was done by the, um, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, what's coming up in terms of the modeling of the watershed by, uh, DWR and the State Control Water Resources Board. And what's important is that the scientific evidence be used to define the unimpaired condition as well as how to support the habitat restoration based on that unimpaired condition, unimpaired condition. And there are a lot of issues in terms of how the unimpaired condition was defined uh, in a way that, uh, at least according to the evidence that I've seen is not consistent with the actual historical reality of the unimpaired condition. And, um, I just, you know, this is a, this is a, an issue of overall interest to the entire Ojai Valley that we get this right. And there's a lot of people paying close attention to it. And, um, I, I just want everybody to know that it's, it's, it's something that I'm, I'm certainly devoting a lot of time on, but as well as a lot of other very, very qualified and smart people. So we're trying to look out for the valley in this whole matter.
Great, thank you, Bill. Much appreciated. Randy?
So, uh, Mayor, I just wanted to, um, uh, thank Bill publicly for all the work that he's doing on this. I thought the article the other day in the Ojai Valley News clearly expressed all of the work and all of the, um, just all of the effort that Bill's putting into, um, I'm not gonna say protecting and saving the valley, but, um, he's, he's, he's doing his, his homework and, um, and he's representing us well along with, um, Bert Rapp and along, and a, and a lot of other people in this community. Um, and, and if we didn't have dedicated community members, um, we'd be in a world of pain right now and we'd be, we, you know, we can't talk about what we discussed in closed session, but um, there'd be a lot of bad things that might be happening to us if we didn't have the right people in the right place, um, making the efforts that they are. So thank you, Bill. I just wanted to say that. The other thing is I, I did bring up the Gold Coast. I just wanted to, to say how important it is that we recognize that, um, the state of California is moving forward by reducing our carbon footprint. And, um, you know, Gold Coast, um, uh, two years ago or three years ago started on their project where they went from a diesel, um, servicing, um, uh, buses to a natural gas to a natural gas system. And they spent a lot of money, millions of dollars in creating this fleet and creating this site. And, um, they're moving forward already progressively and thinking about what they're going to do in the next phase, and that's electric or hydrogen, um, or hydrogen, so I'm just, um, again, I can't stress enough that we can't wait with it, we need to be thinking about what we're going to do, when we're going to do it, how we're going to do it, and who we can either do it with. Um, because I'm looking at, um, uh, the bleakness of where we are in the budget. Um, and even in good years, we're still talking hundreds of thousands of dollars for these buses. Um, so we're talking millions of dollars in replacement that we need to be thinking about. Um, that's it for me.
Thank you, Randy. Great time to do some visioning therefore. Um, all right, um, I have a couple of things, uh, March, as you all know, is Women's History Month, and yesterday was International Women's Day. And I'd like to give two big shouts to two incredible women in our valley. First of all, our own Miss Souza Francina, thank you Souza, third term, right? So, uh, just so grateful, and we're all so grateful to you for giving so much of your time and energy to the valley and standing up always for um, the disenfranchised and those people and animals who need voices, so thank you, thank you, thank you. It's so.
Thank you.
Given so much. And also to our own.
Are we still on council reports?
Uh, yes, this is council reports, to our own, our own award-winning school superintendent Tiffany Morris, who's hung in there for an entire year, uh, and has, um, it's a lose-lose situation for COVID in schools, so we are so grateful to her and we owe her so much for uh, hanging in there and taking care of our kids and our families for last year, it's incredibly difficult, so thank you to Tiffany. Um, on that note, uh, in honor of Women's History Month, the Ojai Unified is doing a panel discussion, March 22nd at 6:30 on Zoom, a seat at the table, past, present, present and future. Uh, for women empowerment, please join us, I'll be participating, and, and as we know, the number one way to improve any society overall is to improve the lot of women and girls. Um, Lisa and Brian Chairman are just doing some listening sessions on Zoom in response to recent social justice issues, so thank you to them, and they've also put up some peace polls at Nordoff. So for more information, just go to ojaipeace.net if you'd like to join in, uh, Susan and I were there a couple last week and it was really, really meaningful. Um, there's a great art exhibit at Lightens Bay Studio, Louisa Roebuck has curated an exhibit of local artists, it's all, it's outside mostly, so it's perfect for social distancing. Uh, please check it out and support local artists and, um, you know, follow the safe COVID protocols, that's one thing that we can do to, to promote art and get outside. Um, and looking forward, April means Earth Day, so, uh, we'll talk about that next month, thank you very much. Anybody else, uh, otherwise we'll move on, City Managers Report?
Are we going to do future agenda?
That's after.
Oh, after, okay.
Yes, and I have a couple of things, uh, quickly, one is obviously, I think everybody's aware, but tomorrow at 6:00 PM, we have our general plan update visioning workshop. Uh, we've told the story a bunch of times, but our first general plan stakeholders meetings were March 13th. Uh, and we ended up pulling the council members out of those stakeholder meetings to declare an emergency, so a year later, uh, we're excited to finally be, you know, starting, we've done all the background work and some of the early stakeholders, now it's time to start having these public meetings and public discussions, so tomorrow's the first, so everybody can join us, uh, via Zoom and participate in that, we're going to have, um, group uh, discussions and, and some, uh, opportunities for people to, to weigh in and give feedback.
What time is that, James?
Tomorrow at 6:00 PM.
Six.
Yeah, and so, and then, uh, just as a reminder, Saturday's the goal setting at 9:00 AM, it's also at the same time, we had scheduled these volunteer days for Stewart Canyon, uh, the Stewart Canyon Restoration Project, so we're going to have that at the same time. Uh, and, uh, one of the participants the other day wrote something saying that the, uh, that project and those volunteer days are, to quote, transformative, which I thought was, you know, a nice positive thing to hear, so anybody who, uh, who isn't watching the goal-setting meeting may want to, um, stop by and volunteer at that Stewart Canyon project. Uh, I, uh, one more update, and then I'm going to give kind of a, a, a status update on the, on, uh, the campus project here, but uh, just a quick update, Ojai Valley Organics, um, that's something that the city council's been very interested in and, and, and has discussed, uh, with the, the closing of the Ojai Valley Organic Site probably about a year ago. Um, we have, we, the city just recently provided a support letter under our legislative program to Supervisor Levere's office to encourage uh, one of these facilities opening. We did hear this week, uh, that there is some issue with some of the building permits through the, the county, and so we're, uh, we're going to reach out and, and see if there's anything we can do, and I, and I also understand Supervisor Levere is doing the same, but I just wanted to give the update that we provided that support letter, uh, and that it's in progress, but it sounds like they're, they're running into an obstacle here, so we'll try to see if we can support that in any way.
Obviously, James, the obstacle is a permanent structure with a permanent restroom.
Exactly, exactly, I wasn't sure if that had, you know, if everybody had heard about that, but it's, yes, a building.
So how many extra vehicle miles traveled are we going to have because we don't want to put in affordable restroom?
Yep, and that's why, you know, we wrote the support letter stating all the positive impacts that this would have and hoping that that would help get us over the hurdle, but we'll see, so, um, uh, last thing is I wanted to just give this update on, let me, um, share this quickly, the, um, are you, is everybody seeing this map?
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to share this, um, and give, uh, we, we received a couple of questions about the, um, the projects that are going on, the, uh, programs that are going in at the campus site. Um, the, uh, city council in late 2019 had stated that a goal, uh, for the coming years was to revitalize the campus and bring more programming in the community to the site. So, uh, shortly thereafter, a, a garden committee was formed that included Councilmember Blatts, Councilmember Haney, and Councilmember Haney, and, uh, and myself, I guess I can put myself in there. Um, we had meetings, obviously COVID has slowed progress and limited the funding for projects, but the last meeting we had, we had agreed that we were going to start creating this map using some of the formal boundaries, um, and make this available to the public, so we've, uh, created it, and then I just wanted to give an overview for people that are asking questions. We do have, um, the following on our site, or working on putting the following on the site, which is City Hall, the police station, the demonstration garden, the children's memorial garden, which we have an MOU with, with, uh, that group to, uh, to install. The help of Ojai and Little House, um, the Stewart Canyon Creek Restoration Project, which would ultimately become the climate park, uh, and we have an MOU with Global Green for that climate park. Um, and then, uh, the pickleball courts, uh, indicated here, and then the last program that we have that isn't identified on the map is the composting program. Uh, we haven't, we approved an MOU with them, the city council approved an MOU with the composting program, but uh, agreed with the program that we would kind of, uh, determine the permanent site as we work, move forward, so it's not illustrated here, although it's currently in the demo garden, because we may work with them to, to kind of move some things around, so uh, I wanted to give this information, we've had a lot of questions about it, um, we're going to make this information publicly available. Um, and so with that, that's the report on that.
James, James, I'm sorry, can, um, Mayor, can, can I chime in just a little bit on that?
Sure.
The, um, I just wanted to add, I just wanted to do a big shout out to your staff, James. Um, Public Works has really stepped up, they've got the foundation for the poles placed for the, uh, sound wall mitigation. And I'd like to personally thank, um, Miguel Contreras, I guess, you know, he's our lead man.
Thank you.
Um, Jeff Graham, done an excellent job, Eddie Lopez, and, um, Tim Kraut actually has spent a lot of time storming and, uh, he was there placing concrete today. And, you know, he's, um, the, one of the biggest instructors and biggest advocates for pickleball in the community, and, um, we'll be coming in there this Saturday to put the first three feet of laughing up, and then we'll start the actual rock work, um, next week, so I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, though, they, they did an outstanding job. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Um, yeah, I would like to throw a, a bit of caution up here. And that is that, um, I never thought of the climate park and, you know, these different things as being separate territories in the campus, it's really different uses. And, um, the climate park, uh, is, is still very, sort of a fluid program in, in progress, and I, I I would, I would hate, you know, and, and, and things like the memorial garden having, you know, fixed boundaries or the climate park having fixed boundaries, it's really a a common area with, with common uses. And, um, I, I would be cautious about trying to, um, represent to the public a sort of a fixed boundary territories as opposed to I believe the vision is more overlapping common uses, in fact, the climate park may evolve to be far more than just a, uh, particular area behind City Hall, it could be, uh, it, it could be approaches that apply citywide. Um, so I guess I would just be cautious about representing things that might be interpreted as exclusive territorial when they're not.
That's, that's, that's a good point, we'll, we'll take a look at it, we'll, we'll.
My personal opinion, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, we can tweak that.
Yeah. And just to confirm, because people have been asking me, so Randy and Ryan, you're in charge of the campus committee, I mean, the, the City Hall Campus. And so when there are questions, direct them towards you?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Are the city manager.
Yeah.
Well, I'd rather not give James more work, absolutely, so.
Well, you, you know, um, um, I, I, I know we, Matt's going to tell us in a minute that we're discussing something. Um, but just to be clear, prior to COVID, we had actually set up that we were looking to put an official city employee in charge of that, so that council members weren't sitting here directing traffic, that's not what we want to be doing, but, um, we.
Out of money.
Well, I, I'm fine to direct traffic, I, I so I'm, I'm happy to volunteer in any way.
So we accept the responsibility, um, I'm speaking for me, um, and I look forward to, again, like, like, um, Bill stated, in fact, I'll be honest with you, when this climate thing started, the, the climate aspect of it, I was lost until Ryan educated us in one of our meetings, his vision of actually unifying the community, the school district. I mean, in so many, you know, the Green Coalition, so many other groups that are involved in the environment in our community. Um, and that's the vision for that facility. It's multi-purpose, it's multi-accessible, it's multi, um, available to anyone and everyone in any group. So we're, we're at the very, very, very beginning of this, um, with a ton of, um, uh, of future involvement from the community and absolutely evolving into something that, that, uh, I think the community is going to enjoy. So we're just in the early stages of any and all of this, so.
And that's where I'll jump into note that, of course, this was a brief update from the city manager that has been provided. At this time, Ryan, councilmembers Blatts and Haney are the committee. Um, but of course, as a committee, subcommittee of the council, they're not empowered directly to directly make decisions that commit to city's funding or nor the city's land. Those choices would come back to the full council in public as recommendations for the committee or the full council to consider. Items short of that can be reviewed and approved by the city manager within his existing budgetary authority and power, um, and will, that will recur as needed as well.
Can I ask a question, may I ask a question?
Of course.
Um, my recollection is that councilmember Haney and Blatts were, um, the, the, the guard, the Community Garden Demonstration Committee. That, that's my recollection, but now you're saying that you're the, what's the title? You're the campus committee or, or what?
Campus police.
Oh.
So if the council doesn't have the same memory of the existing authorities, that's when it might make sense to have a discussion to confirm the positions on a future agenda.
So, or, yeah, let's put that on a future agenda.
But that would take two, so we're all, we'll advance right to the future agenda items, there's one, is there a second for that request?
Well, I'll, if there's confusion, I'll do that.
Okay, that can be brought back to the future meeting to confirm the existing positions and the justice might be desired by a majority of council.
Yeah, again, no rush, but it, I'd like clarity on that. Um, on that point, okay.
It must be somewhere in writing.
In the meantime, staff will confirm with the existing council minutes and provide those to all council members that will reflect all existing designations, anything council does that's action is, of course, in the minutes.
And are they also, at this point, if there's questions about the community garden, um, do I direct that to, uh, Councilmember Haney or Blatts?
Or, or me, yeah. City manager would be the first call for a question from another council member to avoid buying problems.
Yes, people, people want to volunteer, and I usually tell them to just go and see if somebody can orient you, you know, I don't, I don't, so, okay.
Yeah, city manager would be the first call there.
Okay.
A lot of people would really love to get involved there, which is exciting.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay, are we on future?
Future agenda items?
Okay, I have one, or are you going to go around again?
Go ahead, Susan.
Okay, um, well, since April is, um, Earth Day Month, Earth Day and also Earth Day Month, in my, to my way of thinking, of course, every day should be Earth Day, of course, but, um, uh, Mayor Sticks and I have been, um, we had a, uh, informal meeting, uh, uh, to go over the earth-friendly pest management plan that we, I, um, I thought, I thought it was in the works to bring up last year. We met with Patty Pagelin and, uh, Renee Roth. Um, and Kathy Nolan, and Kathy Nolan is going over the draft from, that Patty gave to Greg Grant a year ago, anyway, we'd like to put it on the agenda in April, uh, you know, before Earth Day, in honor of Earth Day. And we, I think we can provide you with the material that I think we, we turned over last year, or actually it was way before COVID, so it must have been 2019, late 2019, I think it was. But, uh, uh, but we're ready to.
I'm sorry, Susan, you're covering your mouth, so I, I didn't, I didn't hear the beginning, what, what are we doing?
The earth friend, the Ojai Earth Friendly Pest Management Plan that Patty Pagelin drafted um, and gave to Greg Grant in 2019. I don't know if it was ever formally on the agenda, she did a presentation, I think, it's been so long, but, um, I can review all my notes, I have a file on it. And we, I can forward you the, the amended plan.
I think she sent it to all of us at one time.
Yeah, I think she, I, I thought that she did, but, um, if I'm correct, Mayor Sticks and I would like to have it on the agenda in April. It just seems, seems like a, a fitting fit, you know, to do something in the right direction for Ojai Day.
Great, okay.
Yeah, I heard a request from two, it sounded like, correct?
Sure, yeah. Uh, Bill?
I have a request, and I hope there's some support for it. Um, to, uh, bring a, uh, a term sheet uh, to a future agenda on a revised uh, tiny home ordinance pilot program structure. Um, we, we, you know, revisit where we, we were a split vote and not going forward before. I would like to put on a future agenda term sheet, uh, discussion for a, a revision to that, a past draft, our proposed ordinance, uh, in a, in a limited pilot program to, um, roll out under the change conditions that we've seen, uh, HCD has come out with some guidelines. There's been some clarifications about, um, a number of aspects, including the, the Rena eligibility, and also there's been some work in Santa Paula and some experience in Santa Paula that, um, councilperson Francina and I have, have been in communication with, with their, uh, what they're doing. Councilperson Francine and I have, have been in communication with, with their, uh, uh, what they're doing. So I just think, I would hope there's some support to bring it back for a, a term sheet discussion.
I second that. Yeah. And also, and, and I, and other cities have now adopted ordinances. It's more, uh, common now. It's been, so I think it'd be really great to bring it back.
Tie that into our housing vision.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, Randy?
Well, you know, it's interesting in conjunction with that, Bill. I'm, I, I remember I said a couple of weeks ago that tiny homes are going to come back. But, you know, as in, in preparation for tonight, I was just looking up ADUs in general. And, you know, the city of Los Angeles has a, a, a program, um, a standard plan program where they actually went out and they got architects. There's like 10 firms. They put together about 15, um, prepackaged ADUs for Los Angeles, already pre-approved. So if someone wants to adapt one of those plans, one of those structures, it's a, um, almost an immediate walkthrough, less than a six-week period to get through planning and, because they're already pre-approved. So, you know, looking at that, I said to myself, well, we're looking at how to figure out how to increase the ADU percentages in our community and how to do it appropriately. Um, and I'm a fan of not trying to rewrite the, the, the rulebook, but, um, maybe, uh, I, I guess what I'm going to ask for is that we direct staff to take a look at the city of Los Angeles ADU standard plan program and bring it back for a discussion for the city of Ojai. And, um, and part of that would be to actually maybe reach out to some of these architects that have performed this service for the city of Los Angeles and see if they'd be, um, interested in either performing a like service or, um, maybe we'll look at adopting just the policy and, and seeing if they'd be willing to allow us to adopt their plans also. But, um, I would suggest to all of you, again, if you'd like to, it's a standard plan program um, for the city of Los Angeles, building an ADU. They actually have an 11-page booklet on how to do it. Um, and I think it's something that, that it's, we keep talking about this, and we don't take any action on it. And I think it's time to take some action.
Would it be something to have the B A B look at first before it came to council? Randy?
Um, I don't have no problem taking it to the B A B. In fact, that might be a good, a good way to actually, um, gives, provide some public awareness and education.
And some-
So, so maybe, maybe we let, uh, well, I'd still like it to come back as a discussion. And then from that point, we can go ahead and, and direct it to how we want to do it.
Yeah, that makes sense, because if we, we can't make a decision tonight, put it on a future agenda, yeah.
Right, well, that's just for a future agenda. So I just need someone to-
I, I kind of, I heard Councilmember Wireick second it. Yeah, that's what I thought I heard too.
Oh, I'm, I'm all about, you know, affordable housing and all its various flavors and strains. And so this sounds like something to look at. I wouldn't want to have a bunch, you know, well, let's not deliberate, let's just talk about it.
Right, I said, go to their site. They also have a matching homeowner's ADU plan with it, which I thought was pretty incredible. Where they actually, you're building an AD, an ADU and that your community is actually, um, integrating senior citizens and people of need into that ADU, ADU program. I thought that was something exceptional also.
It also looks like the OVSD is going to be updating their ordinance on capacity charges.
Yes.
Yes, they have announced that they're intending to do that in communications I received from District Council. Uh, timeline is tentatively by the end of this fiscal year. Staff will continue to monitor that effort, um, to ensure that the OVSD new ADU fees meet the goals of the city's housing element and applicable state law.
Susan?
Help, you're on mute.
Sorry, um, are we bringing, or did, did we end up, um, bringing Randy's item first, and then we're going to do tiny houses or what's the connection?
Didn't say.
We didn't, well, what, what's, what happened?
I'm leaving it up to staff. There, there, there's no timeframe in mind, other than we just need to do it.
So, but, you know, what, are we still doing?
Well, I think, Suzie, you and I can draft a term sheet, submit it to staff, and they can review, they, and, and the mayor, and the mayor and the city manager can sit and do agendas.
Okay. Does that, does that sound good? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, I'd like to put something on the agenda, and this will require zero staff time, okay? Um, I was contacted by some activists, uh, Chiani Dree, who, I don't remember, she ran for school board. She, actually, I taught her 11th grade English at Besse and Hill, so. Wonderful. Um, she's grown up, and she's been doing some research about other cities' responses to social justice issues. And so she's going to, she's going to give a presentation on a potential equity committee, uh, which is focuses on justice, education, health, housing and finance. And, um, last week I participated in a mayor's panel for alumni of Williams College, my alma mater. And it was entitled to holding a community together. It was three mayors, um, alumni. One was from Minnesota, one Indiana, one Massachusetts, and me. And the number one question was, what are all the mayors doing about social justice and Black Lives Matter? And it was really fascinating to hear about the responses. And all of these three gentlemen basically said the same thing, that they had these committees that were formed that promoted inclusion and diversity. So, um, the presentation will give us the opportunity to see what that would look like for us. So, it's exciting.
So you're just asking to put something, uh, as a presentation at the next council?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, y'all?
I have one more, uh, thing. I, I brought this up before. Is it really necessary to put, uh, that, a time certain for the, uh, public comment? I mean, no, nothing else on the agenda has a time. Do we have to, can't we just have it in order without a time, since, since it's really hard to, to tell what time it's going to be?
Okay, so right after the presentations, go straight to public comment every time?
Yeah.
I know, Suzie, you're the one who pushed for to have it time certain, so.
No, 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 I didn't. I was always an advocate not to, but this was, uh, we moved it from eight o'clock to seven o'clock. And that was even, or whatever, we changed the time earlier because by eight o'clock, we were in the middle of a dis- of a discussion. Remember how it used to be, we'd have to interrupt because all of a sudden it was the time. So my, I, I, I'm advocating that we remove the time.
A, a long time ago, it used to be right after the presentation.
Yeah, that's all, that's all we need to do, you know?
That was back, that was, we're going back to the future then.
Right. And, and we also did, right after public comments, we actually allowed for commissioner, um, uh, chairs to actually speak if they wanted to also.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, if they want to, I'll, I, I, can I let them know that if, that if they want to speak, they'll be first? Do we, is there, we're in agreement with that?
After presentations.
I was, yeah, I was reaching out to the commissions to, to see if they wanted to do that, so.
There'll be presentations, commission reports, public comment?
Sounds good.
That's how we used to do it.
Yeah, yeah. And if there isn't anything, then we just move right to public comment.
And all that's within the discretion of the mayor in writing the agenda. If there's any other concern by the council, the council could, on a future gen item, further rewrite the agenda template. But I think everything, everything that's been described can be done by the mayor.
Okay, that sounds reasonable. Um, okay, any-
Didn't it, didn't it get changed for a reason? Isn't there a reason why it didn't happen that way anymore? Like, I, I remember why. I mean, I, okay. Go ahead.
Why?
Well, it, we, we always ran into the same problem. I mean, and Suzie, I remember you saying a million times you wanted a time certain. I mean, I-
No, I didn't. I, well, I'll go back-
Now we're debating the item, which is not an option.
That's, that's-
We'll talk about it later, yeah. Okay, anything?
I'm guessing it would be for, uh, uh, Councilmember Blatts and Mayor Sticks to have a phone call about the history.
Look forward to it, Ryan. All right, anybody else have anything? All right, okay. Well, I guess we can adjourn officially. Thank you all.